That's Ronnie Big Brother. He's watching us.
At this time, we would call the July 28, 2016 Walton County zoning board of justice meeting to order, if you would please stand as we have the invitation, followed by the pleas of allegiance, if you would, Tony.
My heads. Lord, grant us wisdom and patience as we perform the duties of the citizens of Walton County and help all those understand our intent and our purpose. Thank you.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to thank the board members that are here tonight. It is my understanding that Tammy is not here and it's also Art Miller's position was filled and it's my understanding he had to refuse himself or resign because of a position with the planning department. Is that right, Mr. Dice?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I would like to commend the planning department. Hard and outstanding young man, Mr. Long Carter. I think he would be definitely asset to the planning commission, planning department, and I'm glad that you hired him. We hate to lose him as his board member. It would be nice, you know, for him to serve, but I've known him pretty well for a long time and he's an outstanding young man. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's also my understanding, I believe, they would fill that position at the next board, county commissioner meetings.
I believe, Mr. Martin, correct? Yes, sir, that's correct.
We'd like to take and thank Carrie for all the hard work that she does and the other planning department personnel that are here. I guess we can take and thank Mr. Mark Davis for his presence. I wasn't anticipating seeing him tonight. Thank you, Mark. We do have another board attorney, Mr. Lamar O'Connerly.
Connerly.
Connerly. Did it take me a little while? We do welcome you.
Thank you.
We, it is, look forward in working with you and thank you for serving as our board attorney.
Thank you. We're privileged to be here. I'm filling in for David Dice, one of our partners tonight who's going to be out of town. Did not load a, a date.
So you're not going to be, you're not going to be the...
Well, it depends on how much we enjoy it tonight. We'll...
You'll be back. But we do welcome you and thank you very much. Are there any announcements that needs to be made? Mark, do you have anything or Mr.?
No.
Any appeals? Anything on our appeals or...
Nothing from, nothing new from the last meeting, Mr. Dice.
Okay.
So, still, they're still plugging off.
Good deal. At this time, we ask each and every person here tonight that plans to speak before this board, if you would, please stand, raise your right hand, be sworn that the testimony you're guilty of be the truth. Ms. O'Connerly?
I think Mr. Davis is going to square them all in.
Do we, Mr. Davis, on the square of our firm, the testimony you're about to give before this board be the truth? If you would, just say your name when you get to the podium and tell us that you have a small favor.
We have on the first item, the Mr. De Franches. They're going to be continued tonight or are we going to hear that tonight?
Mr. Chairman, the request tonight is to continue until the August 25, 2016 ZBA meeting. That is the request.
Will you need a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of I?
I. Could we, for the record, are you getting the names?
Yes, sir. I'm going to do it for...
Okay. Carrie, do you ask that the person who made the motion state it?
Oh, I was going to give the whole. I know everyone's...
Okay, we're good, we're good.
When it gets to item number three, if you can announce who made the motion and who made the second.
Usually on the variances, when we, we ask for a roll count or, you know, if you want us to do that on everyone, we've added that.
No, that's not right. This, who made the motion, second.
Okay. The second one?
Mr. Chairman, also under De Franches appeals, it's 1B, De Franches appeal of a single-family home building permit that is also being requested to be continued until August 25, 2016, zoning board of justice meeting as well.
Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Tony, Carrie, do you have that? All in favor of I?
I.
Number two?
Mr. Chairman, number two was the at least subdivision variance. Would you like the staff to go first or would you like the applicant to go first? Mr. Chairman?
I'm applicant.
Okay.
If you would please. Who's here for the applicant on this one?
My name, excuse me, my name's Mickey Whitaker and I have been sworn.
What is your name?
Mickey Whitaker. W-H-I-T-A-K-E-R.
Wake it up.
Okay, I'm here as the agent for the HOA for LSA subdivision. It was the subdivision planted back in 1995. At the time it was planted, the covenants were done. They called for a 20-foot front setback, seven and a half side setbacks, and 10-foot rear setbacks. Last year, the county's policy changed on that where they did not honor the subdivision covenants anymore on the setbacks and that, you know, unless it was on the plat, which LSA does have a footprint on the plat, but it is basically for drainage easements on all the lots except for four. And, and so, we're, in our application, we were asking for a 10-foot rear setback variance on all the subdivisions. What got all this started was originally when I went in and we, I looked at the plat, the, the only ones I was really worried about is the ones that did not have the dotted line on the plat because, you know, I thought that was the footprint. During, during further studies and trying to go through the county and trying to find the development order to see what, what the setbacks stated on it, there, back during that period of time, apparently the development orders that were issued were basically a little, a yellow piece of paper that said development approved. I went back to the county commission meeting minutes, the minutes, you know, basically said subdivision approved as requested. All the subdivisions surrounding this all have the 10-foot rear setbacks. Longview to the east, Sandy Shore is too over to the west, and then actually Sunset Beach has a, I think, basically a two-foot setback. It's not on the plat or in their covenant, so I don't know what their setbacks were, but it's somewhere, you know, one to two feet. So, but basically what I, what I, after doing a little bit more research and with the help of Matt Carpenter one day in Definiac, we found a, actually, we did find in the file an engineering plan showing that the, if you look at the plat between the lots, it says a typical 12 feet for the drainage easement and on the front, it says 10 feet typical. Well, everyone thought that the rear was 10 feet, but it turns out the rear is 12 feet. So, I'm, I guess what I'm saying is I wanted to adjust my variance request to 12 feet rear setbacks versus 10.
That, would that not...
But, well, let me finish. What I really want is the 10 feet because of lots seven, eight, 12, and 13. And then we would deal with the others, you know, as we build.
All right. You asking, you asking 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, 19, 18, 17, 16, 15, 14, 13? You asking, how much of the variance request are you asking for?
Well, no, it's just because of the drainage easements, we don't want to have to change that. It's, we want a 12-foot rear setback on the, on lots 1, 2, 3...
So you reducing...
5, 6, 7, not 7, because 7, but 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 because of the drainage easement. We don't want to really have to redo that.
You asking for a 3-foot variance.
Okay, okay, yeah, based 3-foot variance on those and a 5-foot variance on lots 7, 8, 12, and 13.
7, 8, 12, and 13. You asking for a 5-foot variance.
Right. Which is, you know, and I, and I know you guys don't, you know, we try to stay between the four corners of the property we're discussing and, you know, but y'all did get it, you know, I'm aware of y'all got a lot of opposition from Sunset Beach and, and all the people that had actually sent the opposition in from Longview, we've talked to several of them, they said, "Well, we really didn't understand what you're asking for. You're not asking for anything more than what we do." And so, basically what I'm saying is the covenants have been a recorded document for 20 years. They have sat there for everyone to see. There's no, I mean, we're not asking for anything more than how the other subdivisions were built out and how this one was started to be built out. It, I mean, and so we're just trying to align, get everything so it's aligning with what the county sees right now.
I'm trying to understand your drainage easement. You said there's a drainage easement on...
On the plat. I mean, I got a copy of the plat.
I think, I thought we had a copy of the plat.
Yeah. Yeah, if you, if you need one, I got a larger one.
Yeah, I want to see the larger one.
Okay.
This is on lot number four. The drainage, maybe it'll be there.
So the drainage easement is on the side, it's not on the rear?
No, the, the, the confusion came, it was, it was Peter's plat. Basically, we were, you know, I was under the assumption that these were footprints. I was looking at it and Randy Paulson, the county, he said, "Well, we're not going to consider those footprints even though they're on a recorded document because they're labeled as drainage easement, but it's a setback." So, okay, and so if you look at the right here on this one, it says 10-foot drainage easement typical.
That's all the way around them?
Right. Well, but here you see a 12-foot drainage easement here between the lots.
Right.
Okay.
But the drainage easement is not part of the setback. Is that correct or is it part of the setback?
Well, it's within the setback.
It's within the setback?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And that's why you want to stay with 12 because of the drainage easement, you need that and you asking for 3 on those lots?
Yeah, I don't want to have to go back and get the plat reading recorded.
Because of the drainage easement?
Right, yes.
So the drainage easement is part of...
The covenant, we have, we...
Can I see that?
Yep.
The drainage easement part of the backyard?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, there's probably 12 or anything, it's just drainage easement.
Except on 8?
On 7 and 8.
On 7, 8, 12, and...
7 and 13.
What about 14?
That's 10 feet.
No, it's part, it's the one that's asking for a 3-foot. Yeah, but what about 14?
14's the same as 13 and 7 and 8.
Yeah.
Yeah, 12, 13, 14, right.
Well, I can tell you that's 10 and 10.
On that, on the east side?
Let me just look at it and tell. Now, you saying, now you saying this, this plat shows an easement on the back, on the east and the west sides of these lots?
Uh, yeah, if you look at between lots number... Between lots number 1 and 2, you see, you'll see it says 12-foot drainage easement typical between those lots.
Between the lots. I'm talking about east and west. You're asking for an east-west variance?
Right.
So what I'm asking is...
No, it does not say anything about 12 feet.
Exactly.
That's what I, I, and that's what I'm saying. It says, on the front, it says 10 feet, so based on the way I looked at it, it was 10 feet on front and rear.
But it doesn't say that.
It doesn't say that.
Does the covenant say that?
The covenant, the, excuse me, the covenant just, it doesn't talk about the easement. It just says it's a 10-foot rear setback.
If it was planted in 1995, except for the comprehensive plan and adoption, you're saying that it was accepted by the county commissioners as being an exception to the 15, that they accepted it as 10-foot?
That's what I'm assuming they did. I mean, all, all it said in the minute was that the subdivision is approved as requested. That, so that's a...
Are there any houses built in the subdivision?
Well, there's one on golf and two in the subdivision.
What lot is it in, in the subdivision?
Lots number 2 and, let's see, 2...
And they were built with a 10-foot setback, rear setback?
Uh, they were built under those rules, yes. I think they're, I don't know what they're, the measurements are they actually built on though, but they were built under the, you know, the covenants of 10 feet, yes.
Lot number 2 and lot number what?
The one straight across from it.
18?
18.
Any questions? Everyone clear? Scott?
Not yet. Now, when you go by this, and I'm just going to be in hypothetical here, you're showing 10 feet on the front, on the back, going by the scale and the graphic scale over here, they're scaling out of 12 feet.
Right.
And that's what it's supposed to be?
That's what I'm...
That's all, I'll wait till Wayne gets up here.
Yeah, right. Okay, you're right. Yeah, I, I, you know, I've, I've got the recorded documents here and, you know, when I scaled it out, I'm like you, it scaled out to be 12 feet and that's why I'm, I'm saying, you know, I want to reduce it.
I'll follow you.
Or cut back to 12 feet.
Thank you. We're getting our opinion to come back for the board after we have other discussion.
All right, and then I'll come back and answer any questions they have, right?
Oh, absolutely. Ms. Bibby?
Good evening, commissioners. We've had several of these subdivisions before you and this is another one with a very similar circumstances where the county has determined that we cannot recognize covenants and restrictions and when they're, when it's not been recorded on the plat or we don't have documents of a development order, that we must ask for a zoning variance to be able to let the property owners build to the intent of the subdivision, the original intent of the subdivision. Therefore, planning does not have any opposition to granting a variance of this type as we have done before.
No need to get into too much discussion. For as I'm concerned, anyone has any questions for Ms. Bibby?
Mr. Chairman, can I make, Mr. Chairman, can I make one quick comment? Something you've heard from, from me before, if you don't mind, may I?
Sure.
Um, as, as was stated before, you know, for, at one point in time, the county, we have a, a development that was approved with the typical county requirements. They have gone and, and gone by their restrictive covenants, which are private restrictions. The county cannot enforce private restrictions and we are actually, the land development code has an abrogation clause which says we, we do not enforce private restrictions. That's why in working with legal counsel and so forth over the past couple of years, we've kind of resolved that issue to where we have to apply the public, the county regulations. We cannot enforce some of the private restrictions and that's, that's where these are arising from. Historically, the county has allowed people to use those private restrictions for their development, but when those restrictions exceed that of the county land development code requirements, then that, that raises an issue for us. And so that, that's it. And I think we, we understand, we, we don't object to this at all, but just trying to resolve an issue that's kind of been created every number of years.
We do have that directive is in your packet under exhibit D. So if you, if you so care to look at the, the language that Wayne is, is based the determination on.
I think it's one of those situations that the county commissioners back in 1995 accepted it and they thought it's okay, no problem. I understand for Mr. Dice and Mr. Davis has come back and said they need to clean it up. You can agree with it, not agree with it. I think that's something that we need to do. I think it's something we've done in the past and I think we need to continue that till they're all taken care of. So I have no problem with it. Tony, you want to go ahead?
I just have one question. Were these covenants and restrictions, the same covenants and restrictions that were recorded when the plat was recorded?
I believe so. I can...
Okay. Thank you, Vivian. Anyone from the audience had a lot to come out? Say your name for the record.
Good evening, Alex Andrade on behalf of Sunset Beach.
Could you just say your name?
A-N-D-R-A-D-E.
You were sworn?
I have been sworn.
Okay.
Before I make any arguments, I would like to raise a point of order. There was no notice containing the date of this meeting. All residents did receive notice of the June 23rd. However, there was no notice that the hearing was continued. There was no notice that there would be a change to the arguments made and there was no notice of the date or content of what was going to be discussed. So I would like to say that I, sorry.
Can we continue with this? Because without the notice, I mean, he makes a good argument.
Mm-hmm.
I personally think that should be noticed. I think, what's, what's your position on that?
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, it was continued to a date certain. At that last meeting, we, the date was given and so forth for this meeting tonight?
Which would be all well and good if the minutes had been posted on the website so anyone could get an update about when that date certain would be.
What's, what's your procedure? I mean, we do it continuance many times and we never do another notice. I mean, there's so many procedural regulations, is it something we need to, to start re-noticing?
Well, we do continuances a lot and as, as my understanding, as long as you continue it to a date certain, then that is appropriate and proper. Any minutes that we would post before this meeting would be draft, would not be official minutes until the board approves those minutes. So we typically don't, we try not to post draft minutes out there until they've been officially approved by this board, which happened tonight.
It sounds like his argument has changed, however, if you look at his, his initial application, he was talking about simply, you know, his plat setbacks despite the fact that two of the three properties are set back on the back lot lines by 20 feet and they actually comport with the current zoning rules. It sounds like now he's talking about other things that he's found.
Well, before you get into your argument, let's make sure we all satisfied with the notice issue. Legal counsel, what is your position?
I agree with Mr. Dice that if, if a meeting is continued to a date certain, anyone who had interest was there at the prior meeting and had noticed that it would be continued until the next one and had the date and time available to them. It's always good to have notice to the public, but it's not required.
Okay, we feel like, the board feel like notice has been that served adequately? Tony?
I defer to counsel.
Yeah. Everyone? Okay, we're going to go ahead. Feel like that notice was proper, so go ahead with your argument now.
All right, just like to preserve the objection, I'll just say.
Absolutely.
My firm did send a letter, and I believe multiple residents from the two Sunset Villas and Sunset Beach, which we represent, sent a number of objections. It's our opinion that this is a blanket variance. There's been no development plan submitted. The, it's our position that the board doesn't even have jurisdiction to rule on this yet because it has to be in conjunction with the development plan requested and we haven't seen one, we haven't seen one of record. We, we don't understand, we don't know what's going to be built. There, there's, there's simply no reason to provide these setbacks to property owners who purchased the property in February, I believe, of this year, who had more than enough notice of what the zoning was and more than enough notice of the fact that the, the code supersedes any previous restrictions or covenants on the property. And this just seems like spot zoning. If they would like to get this kind of variance, they need to go to the political right and actually go to the county commissioners and, and go through the process. They can't simply get spot zoned for a development they haven't submitted yet and, and proceed to, you know, add some square footage to their properties that they're assuming, or I'm assuming they're planning to sell. This is simply for profit. I don't see the hardship. I don't see the uniqueness of the, or the difficulty of building on these properties, especially when two of the three homes in this subdivision comply with the current zoning rules.
Are you sure? I mean, have you measured it? Did they go by the, when, when, were the...
I'm, I'm eyeballing.
I mean, you know, there's a transition, there is a transition when the comprehensive plan was adopted, I think in 1992, and I think the county, the commissioners, and I think everyone involved, you know, might not have been so familiar with the language in the co- plan. So therefore, when the county commissioner adopted a subdivision in 1995, I think it's that we ran across it before, it's everyone intent that those restrictions or those setbacks on that plat that was recorded was okay as previously. And there's been so many of them, I mean, we deal with them on, on a regular basis in other subdivisions. Legal counsel now is recommending that they go through this process, but I think White Cliffs is one of them, where we've done a number of them because the houses was already built in that subdivision. So, you know, I can see where there, the county has adopted it and the developer said, "Okay, I submitted it, it was adopted," so therefore that the planning department at that time said it's okay. And now we have a planning department saying, "We need to correct this and clean it up and this is a process that we, we do." So that's my position on it. So how, how can we say when it was adopted to the developer, no, that's not the way it is?
Well, the developer made a good point that, you know, our property owners put on notice that the neighbors had, you know, certain covenants and restrictions, which I'm, one, as a, as a person who's purchased property, I, I haven't been ever, I haven't even thought to go and look to a neighboring subdivision, see what their restrictions are to see if they comply with the code. I will refer back to the fact that my interpretation of the intent of section 8 is to, is for, simply for hardship relief and that the regulations of the chapter permit such nonconformities to continue but are intended to restrict further investments which would make them more permanent. I believe that allowing a property to be developed now and to have nonconforming buildings put on it now would make it more permanent and would go against the intent of the code.
Could it not be interpreted that the county, at that time, created the hardship on the developer by approving the, the plat that's, and they said, "You got, you have 10 foot?" So is this not a hardship that the county created?
On the developer at the time in 95, not the developer in 2016 in February that purchased it.
But would that not follow the land?
Would it?
That hardship would continue to follow that property?
Is, is it a hardship if, if the, if the new developer with, you know, full knowledge of the code and understanding of the fact that these investments can't continue?
If it's recorded of record, I think that it's a hardship created by the county commissioner. That's just my position on it.
But it's my understanding the code supersedes those.
Okay.
You've, I'm assuming you guys have perceived our, our letters and our, our legal, you know, opinions from the June 23rd meeting? Mr. Mead from my office submitted it.
That was the 23rd meeting?
Yes, sir. I don't want to necessarily read it and waste everybody's time, but I'm hoping you guys are taking into consideration as well as the, the letter submitted by our property owners.
Do a summation of it.
All right, sir. Again, there's been no, no application for a development order that we've seen or been put on notice of. It's my understanding that the, the board can't consider a variance until a development order's been put in front of you. There has been one, so I do not believe that you guys can hear. There's no evidence of a visible hardship. I don't understand how a drainage has been considered a hardship. We're talking about the level of their investment and their return on the investment. This isn't a hardship similar to the ones that we've seen in the past. Equity demands uniform treatment of current developments and the fact that the code supersedes these restrictions should be taken into consideration with someone who purchased this property with full knowledge of this, this issue. And again, this, this is considered a blanket variance. This isn't specific and unique to a certain property. This is a blanket variance for an entire subdivision. This is a blatant attempt to just increase the square footage of each property. And then finally, I still rest on the fact that this board does not yet have jurisdiction as I've argued previously.
What's the size of the lots? The lots are 100 by 60, 6,000 square feet, is that correct?
I can tell you, sir.
Yeah. Any questions?
That's the smallest. Yeah, it's 60 by 1.
Any questions?
What are the setbacks on the neighboring subdivisions? Do you, I mean, like...
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. However, it's my understanding that we don't take that into consideration when we, we grant these specific variances.
All right.
Sorry? That's all I know.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Oh, not, not for this gentleman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience? Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Dice, would you like to address, uh, his concerns as far as blanket variance, development order, spot zoning?
Well, it's not spot zoning because we're not doing, we're not having a zoning action. Um, you know, and looking at this property, it's something that we, we've dealt with before. Um, I think that the unique issue here is, is that we have a development that for, uh, the county had, had allowed them to use covenants and restrictions for a period of time. We have development that was built to those covenants and restrictions that do not comport to the county regulations. Um, and to, and that in itself causes, uh, what I would consider some, a dis- disjointing of that development. Uh, which, uh, cause, you know, applying it now, it would seem out of character, it'd be a little bit strange with the building, uh, method and patterns in that development. So, from that standpoint, I, I think that, um, this would rectify that issue. We had, you know, the county has before in the past approved setbacks for developments that, that are, you know, that are similar to these. So, it wouldn't be out of the ordinary for, for Walton County to have developments with, you know, twelve-foot setbacks or fifteen-foot setbacks, ten-foot setbacks. Um, that will not be, uh, out of character, I don't believe. And I think the issue here is, is just that, that, uh, over a period of time, uh, people buy these lots, they come in, uh, they're, they're told by the HOA, whomever, here's your, here's your setbacks, here's your criteria, there are private restrictions again, uh, and they build to that. And now, the county setbacks still apply and, uh, we have, um, situation dealing with non-conformities potentially and also, uh, changing the development pattern in a neighborhood midstream.
Do, now, we've done these in the past and encouraged communities to do these as a group in the past because of an existing development pattern. Do you feel like a development pattern, an existing and clear development pattern, is a key component of allowing these to get a blanket variance?
Uh, uh, when I consider this, one of the key things that I think about i- is the homes that were, that are built now to that covenant and restriction standard. Cause technically, if those aren't built to the county standards, they are considered non-conforming. And all the issues with non-conformity come into play.
But they could apply for variance individually based on their prior restrictions, which would make a lot of sense.
They could, that, that, that's certainly true, um, that, that, we don't debate that whatsoever. Uh, I think one of the issues that we think about also, again, secondarily, is, is, is this the pattern of development and disrupting the pattern of development. Uh, that's one of our, I know one of the cases we had a few months ago, uh, you know, it was, it was very noticeable. If you had a change midstream, it'd been very noticeable, very obvious that something's disjointed.
I guess the basic, I mean, the basic question is, don't, don't we need to have some pattern before we accept something that is not in conformance with the current code? Because our, our basis for the argument is that that was the intended development pattern. Well, if there's no pattern that's been established because there's not either any development or the development that was done doesn't conflict with the, you know, intent.
Mm-hmm.
What are we protecting? What are we preserving?
And, and Mr. Bell, that, that's certainly true, um, and I totally agree with that. Um, you know, again, I think primary concern of mine is, is the non-conformity situation. If they're not constructed, then that, that does alleviate that to some degree.
Were you done, Tony?
Yeah.
The other gentleman, he, there are two buildings already, two residences out there now, is that correct?
Uh, I believe so.
Are they built to these twelve-foot set, rear setbacks?
That's, that, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, Mr. Resident, I'm, I'm not certain. That's not something that I've, I've looked into. Do you know, Vivian?
I believe those were excluded from the, um...
So, the ones, the existing homes appear to be, to not be part of this request? Right, I understand. But what I'm, what I'm asking is, are they?
They are part of the requests.
Yeah.
Yeah, one through.
One, two, three, four, five, six is, is requesting a three-foot theirs. Nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, fifteen is a three-foot theirs. So, they are being requested tonight.
Alright, yeah, the map I'm looking at, the exclusion, it could be an error from my mapping system.
But what I'm getting at is, both to y'all's knowledge, you don't know if they're built to the twelve-foot setback, has, has been scaled on here and they used?
Uh, I do not know. I do not know.
But is it not true that you're speaking in generality with the other subdivisions that we have already approved in the past? And there's been a number of them since Marcus advised us to take this action. And others that, when you start talking about individual lot requests, then these individuals may not know it when they purchase the home, they get ready to sell it, somebody report it, code enforcement, and then you're looking at a time process. And this is something that y'all have advised from the legal interpretation of our, of the county attorney to correct this. Is that not correct?
Yes, so that, I mean, this is, this is one way to resolve these issues and it's something that we, we have conveyed.
And this is not gonna be the last one, yeah.
Um, probably not.
And when you start talking about a three-foot, uh, three-foot, uh, variance on a sixty-foot lot, you're talking about a hundred and eighty square feet.
Uh, yes, sir, I trust in your math correct.
And then you're, you're talking about roughly three hundred square feet on the other. So, it's not like some variances that we, we, they've asked, you know, considerable amount, I think we've even done down to two feet.
That's correct.
Any other questions? Thank you.
On the notices, we, we typically don't send out the, the, uh, the request, we just issue notice of, of, of a hearing, correct?
The, the notice is the responsibility of the applicant.
To send out notice.
But they do put in their, the notice, what they're asking.
Yes.
When they, when they do it in the newspaper and when, and they post it, it, it also.
And, and we get verification that, that notice has been given.
So, we do have an issue in terms of the request has changed.
Well, not necessarily because he's asked for a ten-foot, and I understand it's been other, if this, if.
Yes, he, he's, he's asking for less than what was originally noted.
So, is that an issue?
Well, just hang on a minute, just.
We're gonna need to clarify which lots we're talking about.
Jesus, wait, we give you a chance to come back.
So, because it's less restrictive, it's not an issue? Or, or is there an issue?
That's the interpretation of legal counsel. County legal counsel. Our legal counsel's quiet. That's why we like it. Thank you, sir. We'll hear from the other legal counsel.
I'll be here if you look down this way.
You heard a little discussion, go ahead and help us out.
Thank you very much for letting me come speak again. Uh, now that it's clear that two of these properties, we can't even determine what setback they are, and the two would obviously, you know, have an effect on the uniformity of the subdivision. I think it would be reckless to simply set a setback without determining what's already been built there. Uh, again, we talked about the notice and we talked about them asking less, however, it's based on a completely different argument. I had no opportunity to respond to this argument because I haven't seen this application. Uh, if I can't respond to the argument, then absolutely, I don't, I don't have notice. I don't have notice to object to the basis for the, for his, his statement. Because his, his initial application contained nothing about drainage easements, it can, it contained nothing, uh, about almost any of the argument that he proposed here today.
In your letter that's due, addressed a few minutes ago, you pretty well covered everything that you said you didn't know that was a notice, is that correct?
Sorry? Yeah.
In your letter, you addressed issues you said that you didn't know about. You, you address them in your letter, is that correct?
I, I do not factually address anything about a plat with a drainage easement, uh, or any of his arguments about the treatment of other, other subdivisions, which he discusses, or the treatment of our setbacks to his neighboring property. Uh, I, I just, I simply was not prepared for many of the arguments he proposed because he did not provide us sufficient notes.
None of those issues are relevant to his requests, though. I mean, he's actually providing superfluous information that isn't doing anything for him.
Yeah, but you submit the facts to the board, obviously, we'll color your determination.
The only fact he needs to submit is that there was a, a plat and a, uh, a recorded setback that was part of a separate document that was a deed restriction. That's the only thing he's obligated to provide, that's the only thing that his request is based on.
But we do not have any knowledge about what the setbacks are for the two properties at the front of the subdivision. And if we're talking about uniformity, uh, we should have a determination and least in our application about that.
Well, are you talking about the two existing buildings?
Yes, sir, I don't know if y'all have a, do y'all have a, an image of the, of the map?
We do.
Eyeballing it, uh, there, there were property owners who believed. Sorry, I don't.
Lots two and eighteen.
There, there are property owners, I believe, who are under the understanding that it's twenty feet. I can't provide any testimony to that because I didn't do any research on it.
Twenty feet, where are you getting twenty feet now?
Sorry?
Where are you getting twenty feet?
There, there are property owners who submitted their objections to y'all who included that assertion that it was twenty feet. I believe it was.
Rear setback is twenty feet?
On the two buildings that are already built. That's, that's what, that's my understanding. Again, I can't provide factual testimony on it because I haven't done the research, but if we haven't, as the county determined.
Hang on a minute, we, we got a, alarm, he's gotta take his medication or something.
His twenty-five dollars goes in the pot back there.
But if the county hasn't determined what that setback is, then how can they make any testimony or determination on uniformity for the rest of the property that hasn't been built?
It has been, it's been the position of our legal counsel, which is also the county legal counsel, Mr. Mark Davis, that this is a process that we have listened to Mr. Davis, Mr. Dice, to clean up this entire subdivision. If we take and grant the variances on the other lots without including two and eight, or, you know, two and eighteen, then they would have to come back and this is something we've done a number of times. And we don't always listen to legal counsel, we don't always listen to Mr. Dice, but over a number of years, years doing this, this is a way to clean this up. There again, it's my position that the county's created this hardship.
Yes, Mr. Counsel.
And your, and your, and your, your objection has been noted, and we appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Mickey? Come up to, come up to the podium.
He mentioned a letter about the twenty feet, and where the confusion came is that the two houses are built there, if you'll note, notice, uh, that, that, there, there is no twenty feet, but one letter that I did see, uh, on one of the objection letters, it said, I do not object to the twenty feet. It was the guy that lived in Sunset Beach on the corner, he said, I don't object to the twenty feet, which we were not even discussing the twenty feet, but he's talking about the twenty feet buffer off thirty-eight, is what that one letter stated. So, I just, when he mentioned about one of the letters stating something about twenty feet, it was just the guy that lived in Sunset Beach on the corner, that his house backs up to the twenty feet, which is a buffer off of thirty-eight, which is a requirement for the county back there.
Anything else you want to add?
Well, um, well, basically, I mean, I, this is a hardship, I, as, to me, I mean, any subdivision where there's homes built and it, it, you can, you can take the subdivision that he represents, you know, and I know, I, I, we need to stay between the corners of Belisee, I understand that, but he, uh, Sunset Beach, if you look at their covenants, their plat, there is nothing mentioned about setbacks at all in there. I can tell you, you know, that they're, the homes are built within two feet of the, of Belisee subdivision. One of the air conditioners sits in there. So, what I'm saying is, they, one day, if something terrible happens, and hopefully it never will, and anything happens to those houses, that, you know, they're out of, they're all non-conforming.
Well, let's, let's.
Let's stay between the corners, I know. I understand.
You have anything else? Thank you very much, Mickey. One more time, we, we, we usually let him finish, but we'll let you finish. Make it, make it quick, please.
Will he finish his mouth speaking, Mr. Chairman?
Pardon me?
Will he finish his mouth speak?
You want him to speak before you speak?
Would you prefer to go after?
I, I, I'll go after, son.
Alright. Uh, I would like to clarify that the, the letter Mickey's referencing was sent by a, uh, I believe a Mr. Compton from our subdivision. It does not reference the back setbacks, it's his understanding, and I will read it, and says, um, "I have no objection to the proposal to establish the rear setbacks on lots one and nineteen at twenty feet." It does not talk about the setbacks from the road, it's the rear setbacks between the property. That's the only fair.
Twenty-two is not a realistic setback, so we appreciate you clearing that up. Thank you. Mr. Dice?
Chairman, just work real quick, last one, just for the record, to, to read something, a section of the land development code for the, for the board, and this is in eight point oh-two oh-two. Standards and procedures under C entitled initial determination, and it says the following. "The board adjustments shall first determine whether the need for the proposed variance arises out of the physical surroundings, shape, to pocket, condition, or other physical environment, or environmental conditions that are unique to this specific property involved. If so, the board shall make the following required findings based on the granting of the variance for the site alone." This is the key part. "If, however, the condition is common to numerous sites, so that requests for similar variances are likely to be received, the board shall make the required findings based on the cumulative effect of granting the variance to the, to all who may apply." And I think that sort of covers the issue. We've had some discussions about granting a, quote, a blanket variance. I believe that eight point oh-two oh-two C authorizes the board to do so.
Eight point oh-two oh-two C.
Yes, sir.
Land Development Code. Thank you very much. Motion to close, for the discussion?
Make a motion to close?
Second. On the favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Tell me to make the motion in a second?
Motion. We need a motion to approve, and we need a motion to deny. We need a motion.
A motion to approve.
You make a motion to approve the requests on lots. One, two, three, four, five, six, nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, variance to a three-foot, reducing it to a twelve-foot setback. Lot seven, eight, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, your motion is to allow a five-foot variance for a ten-foot setback, is that correct?
That's correct.
Second?
That includes lot fourteen.
Yeah.
Yes. I need a second.
I'll second.
Discussion? Tony, you wanna start?
I've always scored these, anytime that there's a consistent pattern, in fact, I've encouraged these, when there's any kind of consistent pattern. I do have concern when there's not a consistent pattern. I also have concerns when, uh, the time of recording is after, uh, land development code changes. That's my concern on this one, well, two-part concern, um, really that there's not a pattern that's clear and established. However, there are homes already built in the subdivision. I don't know what the setbacks are on those, but really, you know, once they're there, um, and those deeds have transferred and been recorded and, and spread through the community, I have a tendency to follow those, but I do have concern.
You, are you discussing, there's not a pattern that the county commissioners has approved this a number of times from ninety-two to, say, two thousand and six? Is, is that what, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, the pattern I'm talking about is, is the pattern of the community, pattern of, of the homes themselves, the physical pattern that actually happens. Cause, you know, before, even ninety-two, you know, really things could be very random in some parts of the county, um, especially in Seagrove even further back. You know, things are on the property line, across the property line, there's a lot of vagueness there, there were no setbacks, uh, five-foot in Seagrove, um, then they changed. That pattern's already established, and once that pattern was established at five, it established what the street became. Like in Graydon, with the alleys. It, it established a pattern in a way that people understand their community and relate to that community, and it, and it affects everything, it affects how the community grows. When there's no pattern because there's no buildings and it's transferred ownership, even if it hasn't transferred ownership, just the fact that it's changed and it's advertised, that the land development code's changed, we now have these rules, you know, planning has seven and a half on the sides, fifty, twenty, fifteen, front and back. People are aware of that. And I have a concern.
Up to two years ago, approximately two years ago, before the interpretation changed, they could've went to the planning department, received the permit, and built with a ten-foot setback.
Yes, um, more likely than not, um.
It's happened, and it's, and it's, it's Mr. Davis has called this to our attention to correct this, to bring it in compliance.
But until January, we could've gone and pulled a permit for any slalom great house south of the bay without doing a stormwater permit. We've gotta do that because it's been land development code the whole time, but we've never been held to it. Just because we're not being held to something doesn't mean that it's okay.
But it's kind of, it was adopted afterwards.
It was already adopted, we just never forced it.
Bill? Charlie?
I'm conflicted. I mean, I, I think it's, we've been, we've been encouraging people to do this. We've been, we've been actually advocating for it, for them to come and bring it to us as a one lump thing. It, I, I think the hardship was the county did this, and I, I think it is clearing it up. I think that would be the, the easiest thing. On, on the same note, we don't know what this person will build. He does not have a house plan here that says it's gonna be fifty feet tall or ten feet tall or... house plan here that says it's gonna be fifty feet tall, or ten feet tall, or how close he's gonna get, he may just try to take every little bit of it and be really, really.
I'm sure he will.
You know, so there's.
But he's allowed to do that?
If we let him, I mean, like.
Well, you grant the variance, he has to go through the planning department to get their approval on, on the, on the plan.
Yeah. So, I mean, like, when they come before us on an individual variance, we're looking at this individual house, and we say, "Well, you're gonna build a skyscraper here," then we're like, "Hmm, that's a little different." If we get, look at it.
It's only limited to three stories, is that correct, Scott?
Uh, fifty feet on the beach, if I'm correct.
Yeah, fifty feet. Yeah.
To mean, um, I mean, the difference between this one and the other ones that we've had is, the other ones have had a community, there's been a neighborhood there, there's something there that's happened over the years. You know, there'll be a series of them that are showing this pattern, and this pattern starts to emerge, and it becomes their street, it becomes their community. The difference here, and the reason I think we're all feeling, well, some of us are feeling conflicted, is that there's nothing there.
It's unbuilt out.
There's no pattern that's been established, that's being shown. We don't know what the setback is there.
I would agree with what he's saying, I mean, like, there's, the, the other lots, they're largely vacant, as opposed to where there was several people who had already built houses that were using that ten-foot setback as, as their, they were already establishing that as, as their line.
There again, I feel like the county created when they allowed the adoption of the.
Yeah, and I agree with that, too. Like I said, I was conflicted, I mean, like, I feel.
I think there's several that's gonna come before us that is not built, built out.
That may be.
Scott?
Well, I see the problem as being twofold, and I'm gonna go back to some of the other stuff that we've done. We've done the same process in the past, but even back then, the, the problem alleviates from one of the very first plats that we did in eighteen ninety-six, that had no setbacks on it, and that same problem has forged itself all the way up until, uh, the county started requiring setbacks on there, and I want to say about two thousand and four, is when I first noticed that the, that the county required setbacks being on the recorded plat. Everything prior to that, uh, surveyors that fall to, because in my opinion, the surveyor should be professional enough to put the setbacks on the plat without being. Now, granted, that's my opinion of that. On the other hand, staff should've required these things, these setbacks to be on there. That way, there's no problem at all that the public can come up and see what exactly what they gotta do. Now, in this case, as in the other cases, we've got to scale the back sides, which scales at twelve feet, and I agree, you know, ten feet on the front, twelve on the back, and now we're getting these same problems. However, staff has done a very, very good job, in my opinion, to try to alleviate this from the past and for the future as it goes forward. So, I understand everybody that's out there and, and their concerns, believe me, I do can, I hear it, I hear it all the time, I really do. And, uh, but also, I understand the gentleman, it's depth, and I understand his problem. But until we fix this, and like I said, staff's doing a job, and this is how our process has been in the past, so, it's my two cents.
Motion to close discussion?
Second?
Could I add something before we vote, uh, Mr. Chairman? I think the, uh, I, I would ask the Board to make sure we're in the black and white of the LDC when we act, and, uh, not knowing the history of these, I rely on Mr. Davis to step in if he needs to, but the fact that a variance has been granted before doesn't set precedent for the granting of this one. There's nothing wrong with, I don't like the term blanket variance, but there's nothing wrong with applying a variance with other properties that are similarly situated, we don't have a problem with that, but there's a finding of staff in your, in your notebook on page two of that tab, and I would urge you to review those and make sure, if a variance is granted here, that the criteria for the request and the findings match those requirements, because your land development code sets up very specific requirements for the granting of a variance, and, uh, we just want to make sure that, in the Board's mind, that they, each of these criteria are, are met.
We probably don't always follow those to the T.
Yes, sir, and, 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 and I would point out that I agree with Scott, that in nineteen ninety-five, it was not the mistake of the county, it was the mistake of the developer and the person who drafted the plat and filed it up here. That's the original mistake. Since then, it may have been compounded, uh, but I, this is not a, uh, this is an issue the county's gotta solve, it's not one they created.
And we feel like, you know, the code, LDC code, eight-point-oh-two-point-oh-two, as, as pointed out by Mr. Dice and Mr. Davis, we feel like that it would meet the seven criteria, and it's your position to defend our, our decision, and we appreciate that. We have a motion to close discussion, we have a second, on favor, aye?
Aye.
We have a motion on the table to approve.
Chairman, can I clarify that it is for a, to approve a three-foot rear setback on lots one, two, three, four, five, six, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen?
Yes.
No.
And a five-foot rear setback there is on lots seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and fourteen.
And fourteen.
First, uh.
You named fourteen in the first one.
Okay, so fourteen is not in the three foot, it's in the five foot?
Correct.
I have fourteen in the.
The, 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 the motion to approve the three-foot variance on lot one, two, three, four, five, six, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
I believe fourteen.
There is a five-foot variance request on seven, eight, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. That was the motion, that was the second.
Seven, eight.
Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
And the three foot is one, two, say that, say that first one again, the three foot.
Three foot is one, two, three, four, five, six, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Well, the motion, we have a second. Scott, how do you vote? Charlie?
Aye.
Aye. Tony?
Nay.
We have four, approve one name. You have your variance request, you have thirty days to file the appeal after we get the order, we get the order, you have thirty days to file the appeal with circuit court. We appreciate it, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Pardon me?
Mr. Chairman, prior to going on to agenda number, our agenda item number three, may we quickly address agenda item number four? We're requesting a continuance along with the applicant, uh, 'cause we believe we can amicably resolve this in the next thirty days, so we're requesting a continuance for thirty days.
You're saying you'll be able to work it out?
Yes, sir, on agenda item number four, the Centurion by the Sea Appeal.
Motion to continue to the what date?
August twenty-fifth.
August twenty-fifth? Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number three. Cause?
Mr. Chairman, I believe there's some procedural issues, if we may address those prior to getting to the substance of the issue, just to get them out of the way, on item number three.
Sure.
Point of order, uh, Mr. Chair, my name is David Pleat, I have been sworn, I represent the appellant in this case, Coastal Innovations LLC, for this quasi judicial proceeding, and I take at this point, rather than going forward, you're gonna entertain something from the staff, is that correct?
Pardon me?
This is a quasi judicial proceeding.
Right.
Typically, I would go into my case, and then the staff would respond, but I understand there's a, a question from counsel for staff regarding the proceeding itself.
Yes, not the substance of the issue, but the procedural matters prior to getting to the substance. We acknowledge that you would go first with regards to the substance, we're just requesting it be addressed on the procedural issues first.
I'd like to proceed, unless you can tell me.
She wants to address a procedural issue, is that correct?
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
There would be no problem with her addressing a procedural issue, would there?
Well, the proper procedure is for the appellant to put their case on, and then if staff wants to address anything, in my opinion, whether it's procedural or substantive, they can in their case, um, unless it's something that they can't address in their normal case in rebuttal of the appellant's case.
Well, I would disagree, I, I represent the landowner.
Well, point, point, point of order, point of order, we're in a quasi judicial proceeding, and there has to be some structure here.
Yes, sir.
If the, if the county is recognizing a witness out of turn, I want the record to reflect that.
I'm not a witness.
Let's, Mr. Shipman, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's, let the county attorney, what's your procedure?
Um, Mr. Chairman, what we're requesting actually, as a procedural matter, before we get started with this, is first to acknowledge the actual property owner as a formal party to this proceeding, as they are directly affected by this, and under due process, we would request that they be acknowledged to have the same rights as any other party, formal party to this proceeding, not just a member of the public, and I think your counsel might be able to.
I'd like, I'd like to respond to that. There's nothing that I see in the land development code that allows them to have the same standing as the appellant. This is an appeal filed by my client, the respondent is the county, and as a result of actions it took, uh, there's nothing, I know the land development code that allows the county to have another party who's not an appellant or appellee to have the same standing as the appellant in the case. They can call an interested party in their case, and they can take testimony, I can cross, uh, but to have them recognized as an appellant when that is not in the procedural guidelines of the land development code for a quasi judicial proceeding, then I would suggest that it would be improper for the county to proceed in that manner.
You are, Mr.?
I would agree, and if I could pass this out, so you could look at the code while we're talking about this?
Your Honor, if, 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 if the, Mr. Shipman on behalf of his client wanted to file some type of appeal, he could have done so. He is not an appellant here, he is actually representing somebody who got the order that they wanted to get. My client is appealing that order, asking for reversal of that order, so I think it's, again, irregular to have him asked to be in the standing of an appellant, he's not appealing anything. They got the order they wanted.
If I could pass these out?
First, first you gotta recognize whether this is a party to the proceeding before he starts arguing.
I agree, I, I agree, uh, well, you have.
I, I object, let the record reflect, I object that Mr. Shipman is handing out materials to the, to the commission in this quasi judicial proceeding that haven't been previously provided to, to clerk as required, nor to counsel for the appellant.
I'm simply handing out a copy of the code. Now, you're required.
Objection, point of, point of order. Is the, is the, is the staff, Mr. Connolly, calling this gentleman as a witness in the case out of turn? Because I haven't even put on my case yet.
We're.
We haven't proceeded with the case.
Hang on, Mr. Shipman. Hang on, listen, go ahead.
We're not proceeding with the case in chief at this point, we're trying to settle a procedural matter. Uh, I think that, uh, under the code, the applicant or any, any other interested party can appeal to this board, obviously you've done that. Uh, we'll proceed with Mr. Pleat's argument, Mr. Shipman will have a chance to argue after that, we'll hear from the staff, but I think, uh, Carrie's right, that right now, we need to just move forward with the case in chief.
So are we acknowledging that my client is a party to this proceeding?
Objection, there's a process to file as an, as an appeal for a party, you have to submit materials ahead of time, you have to do it within thirty days of the ruling that's in question, you just can't show up in a quasi judicial proceeding and announce yourself as a party.
We, we didn't appeal, but we are the affected party.
And, and the staff can call. You haven't been recognized as a party, sir.
Mr. Pleat, let's give him a little leeway, we're gonna get to this just a minute, Mr. Shipman, go ahead.
Are we a party or not? If we're not a party, and we're denied due process, then I guess we can leave it, it doesn't matter what happens. But if you are seeking to overturn a development order issued to a landowner, and you don't allow them to participate in the process, you've denied them due process, which means your order would be absolutely unenforceable. So are we a party or not?
The staff can call you in its case, in my opinion, in rebuttal to the case of the appellant after the appellant, the appellant has gone forward with its case.
The question is, are we a party?
Mr. Connolly?
Or not?
I haven't seen the documents that have been filed, I haven't seen anything filed by Mr. Shipman asking that, uh, representing that they're a party in this. I don't know, Carrie, they may be there, I don't know, but. Obviously, he has due process, he has the right to be heard, uh.
Why would we ever appeal an order?
It wouldn't be an appeal.
You're not appealing.
Yeah, if you read the order, if you read the actual ordinance, and that's my problem, if you read this ordinance, which I tried to pass out to you, is tab number four, if you want to look at.
Is, is the Board recognizing this gentleman as a party to this proceeding?
We are trying to determine if we're going to, give us a little leeway, please?
If you look at the ordinance, and you look at.
My, my, you know, my objection.
Lynn?
There's a record I'm making, Mr. Chairman, I object to this proceeding going forward in this manner.
Overruled is objection, go ahead.
If you look at section ten-point-oh-two-point-oh-three, which prescribes a quasi judicial hearing procedure, and you flip over to section C, where it talks about the burden of proof, it says, "The applicant shall bear the burden of proving by abstinence of competent substantial evidence presented before the reviewing board, the completeness of his or her request, and the compliance of his or her proposed activity, with all requirements of this code and other applicable law." The ordinance is set up, frankly, I don't know how someone who isn't a landowner could even have standing under this, because the ordinance is set up to the purpose in this quasi judicial hearing, for the landowner to prove that they complied with the code to get the building permit. So how on earth could I not be a party to a proceeding where what you're really seeking to do is take away our building permit? That's what they've asked for. Now, in order to have due process, in order to meet the constitutional requirements, because they're seeking to take a property right away from my client, you can't have us not be a party, and if you deny us that right, you violate our constitutional rights, and this order would be invalid.
The, if I could, Mr. Chair, I don't want to speak out of turn, I think we're mixing apples and oranges here. The staff can call Mr. Shipman in its case, you can call Mr. Shipman's client in its case, but there's procedure, the procedure he's referring to, it says applicant or interested party may appeal. The only appeal in this case that's pending before this board is an interested party, my client, who has appealed. The applicant hasn't appealed. Uh, they have a right to be called in the staff's case, and I would expect them to be called in the staff's case, but, but that's the time for it. There, otherwise, there's no need to timely, within thirty days, note an appeal, announce that you're, uh, appealing something, or, or presenting evidence during the proceeding, which I was required to do ahead of time, um, and I think just procedurally, it's improper to have them recognized on equal footing as an appellant when they haven't appealed anything, when they could be called in the case of the staff.
Under the order of proceeding, which is under the ordinance I just signed to you under section E, it doesn't even provide for the appellant, as he likes to use the term, to present any evidence, it provides for the applicant to present evidence.
Mr. Shipman, you have a copy of that, give Mr. Pleat?
I have, I have, I have.
You have a copy?
I have the whole code right here.
Here.
We're gonna introduce an exhibit A?
Here.
I object, it's just, I want to put something on the record. I want, I want something on the record here, Mr. Shipman just slammed this document, which he never filed before this proceeding, on the podium here, and I ask him to please respectfully act professionally in this proceeding.
And we would wish you would also, let's keep it somewhat calm.
I did not ask for a copy.
I would like to see the copy of his reference.
It's tab four.
It's ten-oh-one-oh-two in the LDC, if you.
Tab four, the section.
I prefer, and you, you don't have seconds.
Section ten-point-oh-nine. Ten-point-oh-two, twelve-point-oh-three, entitled Procedure of Quasi Judicial Hearing, and specifically, I've talked about sections. about sections C, D, and E, which are on page four, 13.
And I will point out for the commission, he's mixing up terms. It says applicant or other person that is directly affected can appeal. They refer to the term applicant throughout, but clearly, this is not the applicant that appealed this case. It is an interested person. So where you see applicant later within this appeal procedure, it's referring to the person who appealed the case.
Mr. Pleat, I don't think there's any question that you have standing to do what we're doing, so.
Actually, I do on that.
I know, I know you do, but Kerry, the parties here basically are that the county has made a decision. Mr. Pleat and his client have appealed it. You guys are the ones that answer by the appeal. I mean, we need to hear from you as to where you stand on this.
That is correct. We were requesting and have requested that the property owner of the actual permit be made a party as it is their interest that is being decided tonight, essentially, and that's why we asked for it. But at this point in time, it's up to the, the board. I think you've heard arguments from the property owner now, and you've also heard arguments. We will proceed forward either way.
There's a difference between being a witness and being a participant. As a participant, we get to ask questions, and that's the reason why we are a party. If you don't get to participate, we have no due process.
Mr. Shipman, interest is the property owner. Your interest is individual appealing the planning department that is not the property owner, is that correct?
That is correct.
We will allow Mr. Shipman to be party of the county as representing the property owner. I think any property owner should have the right to be in the appeal process.
My client is not appealing any decision made by Kotomolo, his client. My client is appealing the actions and decisions of Walton County through the planning department.
We understand that, I believe, as a board, and we will take and give Mr. Shipman the opportunity to represent the property owner in defending that permit that's been issued by the building department.
Just for clarity of record, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
The ruling of the chair is that you are adding a party to this quasi judicial proceeding, this appeal by my client, that party being the original property owner applicant, Kotomolo, as a party to this proceeding with the rights to examine witnesses and present testimony and evidence.
In an orderly fashion, yes.
I just will note for the record that while I had to present evidence ahead of time to the clerk, time 16, for distribution before this proceeding, as required by the procedure, the new party to this case has not had that same burden of having produced information to the county, to the parties that existed at the time.
Then I guess his presentation would be limited.
I just, I'm just noting that for the record as an objection.
His presentation would be limited.
And I'll make that simple. Other than giving you the, the law, which I, I think I've argued on standing, I don't have an intention of examining any, of presenting any exhibits that aren't what the county has.
And you're, you understand and you agree with that?
I have no idea. He just got named as a party representative. I don't know what he's gonna put on.
He just went on record saying he would not introduce any new evidence to this board that, that the, the staff does not have.
Does he already know what the staff's gonna be presenting? Because I didn't know if he, he has already determined that with the staff.
David, we'll, I mean, Mr. Pleat, I'm sorry. We'll proceed based on the restrictions imposed by the.
I understand the ruling, and I've duly noted my objection. Thank you, Mr. Connerly.
Go ahead with your appeal, please.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Connerly, Ms. Parsons, Mr. Davis. I'm David Pleat from the law firm of Pleat, Perry, and Ritchie, and I represent Coastal Innovations LLC. Coastal Innovations is here today through its principals, Sandy Thomas and Jill McDonald. They are the proprietors of the Old Florida Fish House, which is an institution, a landmark restaurant on 30A, and they are the owners and the operators of that business. This is just a, a quick peek at the parcel that we're all here to talk about this evening. Of course, the beautiful Eastern Lake, the Coastal Dune Lake, the parcel in question you can see on the north side of 30A. That's 30A running from east to west. They are across the lake. I think it's very important in these quasi judicial proceedings, because I know you wear different hats as a board of adjustment, hearing different types of cases, like we just heard on those variance requests and the public hearing types of hearings. This is different. This is a judicial, quasi judicial proceeding, and it has its own rules pursuant to the Land Development Code and the law of this county. And I just want to highlight a couple of things, so everybody's on the same page as what the standards are that are applied to this proceeding. You're here to decide the appeal that my client has filed. The concurring vote of at least four members of the board is necessary to reverse any order or prior decision of the planning department. The appropriate reviewing board conducts this quasi judicial proceeding, and it must be fair, open, and impartial in nature, followed by the issuance or denial of the requested action or development order or permit. There's a burden of proof. The burden of proof is carried by my clients. That applicable burden of proof has to be proven by a preponderance of competent substantial evidence presented before you as the reviewing board. A preponderance of the evidence shall mean that amount of evidence which is enough to persuade a reasonable and prudent person that a claim or a contention is more likely or not to be true. The reviewing board shall consider the testimony of all witnesses, regardless of who may call them, who may have called them, and all exhibits received in evidence. As to the rules of evidence, it's a little different than when I proceed before the circuit court, before Judge Green and one of the other judges. Here, the formal rules of evidence shall not apply. All evidence of a type commonly referred, relied upon by reasonable prudent men in the conduct of their affairs shall be admissible, whether or not such evidence would be admissible in an actual court of law. Hearsay evidence, which is generally not allowed in the, in the court proceedings, hearsay evidence may be used in this quasi judicial proceeding for the purpose of supplementing or explaining other evidence, but it shall not be sufficient in and of itself to support a finding of fact unless it would be admissible over objection in a civil action. The testimony, testimony as noted previously is under oath. There's a report here today that's being recorded. Parties may cross-examine witnesses and present rebuttal evidence. Eventually, you're gonna be asked to issue some findings of fact in an order. Unless the parties of the, and the applicable board agree to an extension of the applicable board's amount of time, the board shall, within 15 working days of this hearing, or within 15 working days of the receipt of a transcript of the hearing, if one is requested by the applicable board, whichever's longer, will prepare an actual written order, which is to include your statement identifying the applicable criteria and standards of which, against which the proposal or request was tested, findings of fact based on the evidence in the record, which ultimately establish compliance or noncompliance with the applicable criteria and standards of the code. The board's conclusion, supported by findings of fact and law and rules and regulations, to either approve, conditionally approve, or deny the proposal or request, is also to be included. Moving to the issues particular to this case before the board. There are four general issues, in no particular order of importance. Number one, the development order issued back in 2004, the original development order, which I will describe in detail in a moment, it was, it expired by its own terms without renewal when the initial project was completed in 2006. There's a one-year time period, which we'll go through in a moment, unless there's a good faith effort to continue with construction. There was a continuous effort to construct, and the actual condominiums that were, commercial condominiums were deeded over in 2006 when the construction was completed. The building that is the subject of this litigation here today was not built, and I'm gonna explain why they didn't build it back, build it back then. Both the original construction back in 2004 and the current proposed construction violate the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone. Not only the construction that is now going on as we speak in the last couple of weeks, before any of that dirt was tilled, the original construction, as my expert engineer will explain in a moment, Mr. Robert Carroll, already had disturbed 39% of the Coastal Dune Protection Zone. So before the new construction even begins, which obviously will add to that disturbance, there's a violation of the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone ordinance. The stormwater system is inadequate, and current construction proposed will only exacerbate the problem. The entire western lot, which is the applicant's lot, serves as stormwater retention area. I'm gonna show you some pictures in a moment to explain that further. Also, parking is not adequate for the proposed construction. In this first, I have different photos that show different angles of the property. Here, we're looking west to east. That deck and walkway onto the deck on Eastern Lake is part of this parcel. That is the subject of this litigation. And the building, if you go directly north, or sorry, east on this picture, from the deck on the water, there's a building. You can see that particular building is the one that was built back in 2004 through 2006. I'm gonna give you some history of the parcels in question. I have a pointer, but I don't wanna use the laser across the eyes of everybody here. But at one point, there were three parcels. If you look at the bottom of this exhibit now, as you have, you see County Road 30A, and the parcel's moving north above that.
Mr. Pleat, could I ask a question before we get too far down the road?
Yes, sir.
In the argument that the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone has been violated, is it your argument that the permit allowed that, or is it your argument that that's being done outside of the permit?
I think the evidence will show, Mr. Connerly, that there were repeated questions by TRC members, by County Commissioner Sidney Meadows, asking the very same question, doesn't it already violate this Dune Lake Protection Zone, which, in my opinion, was not answered or not answered adequately at any time in 2004 through the process, and no one had answered the question until we're gonna answer it through Mr. Carroll today.
Okay, thank you.
There's, so there's three parcels that had one, one single owner, Three Amigos was the name of the company, and they owned parcel number one, which includes, we call it the western parcel, that's the subject of this litigation, and the east part of parcel one, which is where they did build the commercial condominium that abuts 30A. A second parcel where you have Old Florida Fish House, and a third parcel to the north of that, single owner at that time. I have, the next diagram shows a lot split that occurred in 2013, whereby Eastern Lake Village LTD, who bought from Three Amigos, parcel one, that rectangular you see highlighted there on this particular slide, Eastern Lake Village decided to divide that lot. A new parcel number was issued for the western parcel, which is the subject of this litigation, different from the global rectangular parcel number from 2004's development. There's a different owner of the parcel. The original owner of this development order back in '04 was Eastern Lake Village LTD. The applicant in this case is Kotomolo Holdings. Kotomolo Holdings is an unrelated company that purchased the lot from Eastern in 2013 as a result of this lot split depicted in this particular slide. Kind of summarizing the timelines, I think it would be helpful. Again, Three Amigos buys this, these three parcels in June 18th of 1999. Three Amigos obtains, this was a minor lot split back in August of 2002, just correcting a line. They sell parcel one in 2002, August of 2002, to Eastern Lake Village LTD. The development plans were first submitted by Eastern Lake Village, October of 2002, to staff. They modified those development plans in July of '04, and they had issued a development order and a parcel number, different from the development order in this case, different from the parcel number in this case, which was valid from one year from the approval date. And I have in prans 1.46 acres. Mr. Carroll is gonna address the fact that you'll see throughout this record, a staff confusion over whether or not it's 1.97 acres, this rectangular parcel, or 1.46. The order unequivocally that was issued back in '04 says it's 1.46. Mr. Carroll is gonna explain why initial site plans considered at 1.97, but the actual lot that was developed as part of the development order was 1.46, answering that question that was never answered during the course of the process of this, back in '04, answered the current process. Eastern Lake Village completed building approximately one year later in '06. That's when deeds were issued to the condominium owners of the building that abuts 30A on the eastern part of that, of that parcel. Then Eastern Lake Village decides to sell the undeveloped parcel to Kotomolo in February of 2013. This is eight years after the completion of the work on the building that was subject to the original development order. There was no other work performed during those eight years, it's more than eight years, until in 2014, as we'll see in a moment, Mr. Ed Stanford, who's an engineer for the applicant, makes, starts making inquiry of staff in 2014, whether or not the proposed second building could still be built on this half of the parcel, even though it's a different parcel number now, even though it's a different owner now. ELV sells to Kotomolo, August of 2014, the western half of its parcel. That's when it ended up in the current hands of the title owner. New parcel number now, new development order now, and as the May of 2016 order says, the one that we're here on here today, it's an amendment of a prior development order of 1.97 acres. That's wrong. It's not 1.97 acres. The original development order is 1.46 acres, and they're seeking an amendment of that order many years later, 12 years after the original application in '04. The next slide I just showed, put in here to show you that there are, in fact, two different parcel numbers for Kotomolo Holdings that are listed with Mr. Piltch's office, the property appraiser, and a different one for Eastern Lake Village. The development, the commercial development is Eastern Lake Village. They have an owners' association, which owns the common area, the parking lots, et cetera. Different parcel numbers for both. Here's another view of the dock, which has been referred to in some staff documents as a commercial dock, that abuts the property that is the subject of this litigation. You'll see a pool that's been lined fallow for many years to the, I guess, to the northwest a little bit in this picture. That was part of the original disturbance in development that occurred back in '04. I wanna focus on issue one, which is the development order, and go to the Land Development Code 1101.02. Expiration of permits issued for minor development. A development permit for a minor development shall be valid for a period of one year and may be renewed only once for a period not to exceed one year. The development permit shall not expire if the development has commenced and is continuing in good faith according to the approved plan. I think this is common knowledge amongst many people in the building community, and certainly for you all as members of this board hearing these types of cases, but the Land Development Code's very clear. It's a one-year development order unless you show good faith. If someone goes and turns over one shovel full of dirt and disappears for eleven and a half months, that would probably bring into question whether that was a good faith attempt. Here, we have the development order in December of '04, a continued effort to construct and complete pursuant to that development order culminating a year and a half later in 2006. Required contents of development orders. With regard to the concurrency management requirements in chapter three, the time period for which the preliminary development order is valid, a specific time period during which the development order is valid and during which time development shall commence. A final development order shall remain valid only if development commences and continues in good faith according to the terms and conditions of the approval. The next slide you'll see is the actual development order issued. It's a different development order than the one we're here on today. It's 402.06, issued to the project name Eastern Lake Village Revised. Different parcel number than the one we have here today. Total size of the property, 1.46 acres. When this development order is issued, and you can see a good portion of it is the standard form for the staff to issue when they issue development orders, the second page has two places where they have strict admonitions to the person who's receiving the development order. Four items down, it says unequivocally, consistent with the Land Development Code, a development permit for a major or minor development shall be valid from the approval date, December 12th, 2004, for a period of one year and may be renewed for a cumulative period not to exceed one year. And I would note parenthetically, there was no request for renewal at any time in this, this particular file. The development permit shall not expire if development has commenced and is continuing in good faith according to the approved plan. I've already made that point. If you're making a good faith effort, you can go beyond that year. And again, on the very bottom, you'll see where the date of the order is, December 12th, 2004, it looks like. The planning director signed it on December 16th, '04. And then on the bottom, in boldface, this development permit is valid for one year. Another vantage point, another view of the property in question, showing the frontage there with 30A. I wanna move on to the issue of the Coastal Dune Lake Preservation Zone, and I put this next slide up just to show the, the 50,000-foot view the county has of the important. importance of these precious coastal dune lakes. Objective 1-4.3. Walton County shall continue to monitor, protect, and enhance one of the world's, not just the area, one of the world's extremely rare and unique water features in the series of coastal dune lake watersheds through responsible stormwater management. It's a bird's eye view again of the property, showing the property in Eastern Lake. In a moment, I'm going to bring up Mr. Carroll, ask him some questions, but I wanted to show, this is from the site plan of the original development order back in '04. You can see on the approved site plan that there are two important marks for the coastal dune lake preservation zone. You see the water's edge to the left. The highlighted next line is your 100-foot line, that has been marked by the engineers. And the second yellow line, to the right of the page, you can see where the 300-foot line appears. It actually appears into some of the building, as you can see, and through the parking lot of what was constructed back in '05 and '06. That's an important reference point for the questions I'm going to have from Mr. Carroll. The Land Development Code is very specific, and you'll see later in the TRC notes and reports, and some other staff reports, constant questioning about whether or not this violates the coastal dune lake protection zone. 4.02.03 Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zones. All lands within an area beginning at the mean or ordinary high water line of the coastal dune lakes and their tributaries extending 300 feet landward. Within the coastal dune lake protection zone, development shall be allowed within the zone subject to the following restrictions. Open space. All new development and redevelopment shall preserve at least 75% of the portion of the parcel within the 300-foot protection zone and open space. Under nine below, C9, all development shall preserve at least 75% of the parcel within the 300-foot zone as open space. Vegetated clearing within the zone shall be limited to that which is necessary to accommodate the 25%, which is permitted, plus a 10-foot cleared buffer immediately adjacent to buildings. Again, at the comprehensive plan, we see the same language.
Mr. Pleat?
Yes, sir.
I think we missed on a page.
I believe so.
It should be page 24 that you're on right now?
Page 23 is blank.
That was, that was meant to be blank.
Did you not just read from it?
Well, yeah, I did read from that. It shouldn't be blank. Mine is not blank.
All ones that were turned into me are blank, page 23.
Okay, well, I will refer again, just for the record, 23 is referencing the Land Development Code 4.02.03. And then on page 24, we have the comprehensive plan, again, reiterating this important language at C1.4.1. The coastal dune lake protection zone is defined as the zone beginning at the mean or ordinary high water mark of the coastal dune lakes and extending 300-foot landward for all coastal dune lakes and their tributaries. And importantly, because you'll see this question specifically come up as to this section later in the TRC reports, as to what is going on with this particular issue.
Mr. Pleat?
Yes?
I have a real issue with number 23 being vacant. If you're submitting this for us to review, I think we need a copy of 23.
I have extra copies.
To be a complete package. And if we need to have staff to make copies, we'd be glad to have staff make copies, but we need a complete package.
Yes, I have two extra copies here, if I could, Mr. Chair, approach the clerk.
Could we get copies made here?
David, maybe you want to put into the record that this was originally submitted to the county?
It, it-
The number of the page and so forth on it.
Yes, this is part of a larger package of material that I've been going through. Page 23 did include the, this reference to 4.02.03 of the Land Development Code. For some reason, it's appearing blank on the copies that were distributed. But we are making, and I appreciate Mr. Chair having the copies made, so that there'll be a complete set for all of the members of the board. And for this record, the copies of page 23, Land Development Code, Section 4.02.03 and 4.03.03 are being distributed to the members of the board. And I highlighted up this slide, the language from the very beginning through item B, and
Okay.
You just said item D.
I, I-
C.
Mr. Fletcher, I had read from C9.
Okay.
On the bottom of the page. And with Mr. Chair's permission, I'll be glad to go forward.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. The comprehensive plan, you'll see these specific sections highlighted in reports we're going to see in a moment, where there's questions asked specifically about this, these sections. C-1.41, eight, in particular, preserving at least 75% of the portion of the parcel which is within the 300-foot CDLPZ and landward of the initial 100-foot shoreline buffer as open space for all new development and redevelopment. Vegetated clearing within this preserved area shall be limited to that which is necessary to accommodate the 25% development that is permitted. Now, I'm going to bring up, if I could, my first witness. Before I do that, Madam Clerk, we have two blowups here that I believe Mr. Carroll may be referring to. I think you had some sent in advance, but I have extra copies of those two blowups, if you don't have those.
Are they in your presentation?
I believe I have sent them over to you to be included, but if not, I've got extra copies here.
What I meant was this, here's this packet that they delivered to me.
Okay, it should be in there, but for easy reference, I have these extra copies as well.
The copy's here.
I think it's 10.
Okay.
And those are duplicates, Madam Clerk, of what is blown up here on the board. And if I could call Mr. Carroll up to the podium, please. I have a few questions for Mr. Carroll. Right here would be fine. And if you would state your name and that you've been sworn.
Robert Carroll, I have been sworn.
And Mr. Carroll, what's your profession?
I'm a licensed civil engineer.
How long have you been a licensed civil engineer?
Licensed about 14, practicing about 20.
And very briefly, what type of work do you do as a civil engineer?
Our primary work is site development.
As part of your job as a civil engineer, have you worked in the development of real property?
Yes, sir.
Have you worked on commercial developments?
Yes, sir.
In the course of your work for clients as a civil engineer, have you gained familiarity with local land development codes and comprehensive plans?
Yes, sir, I have.
Have you done work in Walton County before?
Yes, sir, I have.
Are you familiar, and have you made yourself familiar with the parcel that brings us here today, the Cotomolo parcel?
Yes, I have.
There's been some, and we'll see in a moment, in the, in the record, confusion about the size of the originally approved development order. Was it 1.97 acres or 1.43 or 6 that was referred to on the actual order? Were you able to determine why there might have been that confusion in this file?
Going through the original file, there was a survey in there, and it was part of this development order as well. And it shows a dark boundary line. I don't know, is it, do they have this?
They do have that in there, but go ahead, I know what you could use to just explain it.
This parcel, one question here, is the 1.46. It's only about 144 feet wide. You've got a 300-foot line here, so it's approximately 400. So quickly doing the math, you can figure it's right at the 1.46 acres. There is a diagram, and she can see 1.1, and it has a bold line that kind of hugs this shoreline, comes around here, comes in here. We're just making the assumption that that was where that extra acreage came from, because there's no more acreage to be added than this boundary, so. But in the, it's pretty evident that it is a very bold line, which is always represented as a boundary line, so we're going to assume that's where that additional acreage was coming from.
Are you familiar with the coastal dune lake protection zone ordinances and land development code sections in Walton County?
Yes, sir.
In regard to this particular case, have you reviewed the portions of the file that reflect the 100-foot, 300-foot markers for the development that is the subject of the original development order?
Yes, sir, we have.
Based upon that review, can you, as an engineer, have you been able to determine how much of the parcel was in compliance or not in compliance with the coastal dune lake protection zone as it existed in the '04 to '06 development order? That's my first question to you.
Can you show it in a diagram?
If you could.
Okay.
In fact, we all know that within the first 100 feet, which is represented by green line here, no development is to occur as far as clearing goes. There is a pool right here that does encroach a little over that 100-foot line. Then coming back, the pink line here is the 300-foot line. The way the verbiage is, it states that you can do 25% within this area that can be cleared, or wherever you have buildings, you can do an additional 10 feet. But if you take 300 feet, you break it up into quarters, and you're allowed 75 feet. So if you take this line and back it off 75 feet, it's about where that parking lot is, and it means any vegetation. So if you were to clear this entire strip right here, that would be all that you're allowed. But we know that the parking lot's here, the building's here, they're cleared for the stormwater pond, the pool, the walkway, and all that. So what we analyze from that is about 39% that's been cleared.
And that's prior to any development that's ongoing right now, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's what's out there on grade now.
And do you have an opinion whether the current construction would increase that 39% or would it stay the same?
Any future disturbance would be more clearance, would further violate it. If they were to clear any more than what's already been cleared, because it's already violated it.
I've no further questions of this witness, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shippman?
Okay, I'm, no, no, you need to stay up.
Yeah, this is the opportunity for other recognized parties to question Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Carroll, did you review an ASBIL survey of the construction out there?
I have seen an ASBIL.
Did you review one for rendering your opinions in here today?
The ones that I had, yes, sir.
Okay, so you did have them.
Yes, sir.
Did you confirm with a separate survey?
We did not do a new survey, no, sir.
Okay. Did you confirm the acreage with a survey?
There's multiple acreages on different pieces that we've seen.
Did you confirm the acreage on my client's lot with an independent survey?
We drew on top of the survey that was provided to us and compared the acreage. But we did not get the 1.97.
What was the date of the survey that was provided to you?
What we had was the package that was submitted for the development order, so the survey that was in there.
You're aware that that survey shows 1.97 plus or minus acres?
Okay.
Okay, you disagree with the surveyor then?
I mean, all I can tell you is that if you take that area and you multiply it out, it doesn't equal 1.97 acres.
According to you?
Yes, sir.
But according to the surveyor, he did, it was 1.97 acres.
Okay.
Right?
That I don't know, I can't confirm that, sir.
Okay. Well, did you-
The acreage has nothing to do with the coastal area, though. It's the overall acreage of the parcels, what you're referring to, is that correct?
My client's parcel, yes.
Okay.
The acreage doesn't have anything to do with the coastal dune lake requirement? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. There's, there's multiple parcels out here. Your client's parcel you're referring to is this parcel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And no, sir, that would not be 1.97 acres, in my opinion.
Okay. Would you agree the surveyor, based on the survey that was submitted to the planning department, disagrees with you?
I've not seen that survey that you're referring to. The survey that I saw is an overall of this, and it refers to the-
Of both parcels?
Yes, which says that it's the 1.46.
Have you looked at a survey of the parcel that is owned by my client, of that's just that parcel?
I have not been provided that, no, sir.
Okay. So you don't know how much land my client actually owns?
I know it's less than the 1.46, yes, sir.
You're saying this overall parcel from here to here is 1.46?
Yes.
Then how do you explain that the survey that was submitted just for my client's parcel is 1.97 acres?
And you say you're considering points.
Have you looked at the application that was submitted to the planning department?
Yes.
Have you looked at those materials?
Yes.
Did you see where those materials reflect that their parcel is 1.97 acres?
You're saying therefore it's a parcel, you're referring to-
I'm referring, excuse me.
Mr. Pleat, let him finish. The Nick and Cross.
I understand, Mr. Shipp.
Mr. Pleat.
All right. Did you review the application and the, and the less than minor development order issued by the planning department?
I have gone through it, yes, sir.
And did you see where based on the survey that was submitted, it was 1.97 acres?
I'm looking at the development order package here to see the ASBIL survey, and this set of plans does not have the ASBIL. It's got an ASBIL, but it does not have any acreage on it.
All right, let me ask you, how mu, how much acreage, according to you, is my client's
Less than 1.46, because it included this parcel here.
Have you made the calculation?
We have, yes, sir. I'm not a licensed surveyor, I'm not here to provide a survey. If you have a survey, I'd be glad to look at it.
Does it matter how much land there is in my client's parcel as to whether or not it violates any of the dune lake protections?
The dune lake protection is measured from the water within 300 feet of it. You can go 800 acres beyond the lake, but it's measured from the waterline to within 300 feet. So whether you have one acre or 10 acres, it's still the same calculation, sir.
And if you're less than 3, your entire lot is less than 300 feet, you get to cover 25%, right?
Say that again, sir.
If your entire plat, on backup, do you agree that this property that belongs to my client is right here, is a platted lot?
You had a lot split done, so yes.
So it's a platted lot?
Sure.
Okay. And as a platted lot, we are entitled to be able to build a structure on it, correct?
It's up to the planning department to decide that. That's not my decision, sir.
You're an engineer that does site planning, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Down in Florida, you cannot, the government can't allow a lot to be platted that is unbuilt, right?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay. So this is a platted lot, and we're entitled to build on it, right?
Objection caused for a legal conclusion.
What's your understanding as an engineer of this site? If it's a platted lot, the owner's entitled to build something on it, aren't they?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in terms of the coastal dune lake protection zone, if the platted lot, the entire lot, is less than 300 feet from the edge of the lake, we still get to cover 25% of it with a structure, right? Or disturbance.
It's not for me to decide, sir.
Well, isn't that what the regulation says, or do you know?
Well, the regulation says that you can disturb 25% of the area within the 300, as long as none of the disturbance in the first 100.
All right. What if it's a lot that's not 300 feet deep?
Okay.
Are you saying it's not 300 feet deep, you don't get to cover anything on it?
That's for the planning department to decide, sir. If you created a lot-
Okay, so you're not really rendering an opinion as to how much this lot that's owned by my client is developable or not within compliance with the dune lake protections?
We've looked at the dune lake protection and see what kind of coverage is allowed within the first 300 feet, and that's what we did.
Well, I'm asking you, what kind of coverage is allowed within this particular platted lot? Well, I'm asking you, what kind of coverage is allowed within this particular platted lot?
All right, from the initial development, or since you've replatted it?
No, from this particular platted lot. It's a platted lot, right?
Yes, sir.
You agree with that?
Yes, sir, you had a lot split done.
Okay, so this is a platted lot. What percentage of it is available for construction?
If you will provide me your survey, I'll be glad to do that. I was not provided a lot, your lot split. What we did is the overall parcel, because that's how the development order was written.
So for purposes of testifying before this board on this appeal, you didn't look at how much of this lot is available to be built on?
Sure I did.
Didn't you just tell me you looked at the overall development? Yes?
Yes, sir, I did.
So you didn't look at this as an individually platted lot, did you?
I looked at it as an overall, because the development order was an extension of the original development.
Okay. So going back to my question, this is an individually platted lot. And this development order was issued to an individually platted lot, wasn't it? Was it?
Um, I as- yes, yes.
Okay. And you didn't look to see or make a calculation as to how much of this individually platted lot could be built on? And comply with the coastal, the Dune Lake Protections Zone?
Well, we looked within the first 300 feet, whether your, your property is less than the 300 feet. So it would allow less coverage than the numbers I stated earlier.
By including the building next door that isn't on our platted lot?
Uh, it includes half the parking lot. It's still a total number.
You included the building next door that isn't on our platted lot?
Of what's already there, I did.
Okay.
Of what's allowed within the 300 feet, whether it's your lot or multiple lots, it's still a total allowable cleared area within the 300 feet.
But when you have an individually platted lot, the calculation applies to individually platted lot, not your lot and your neighbor's lot, right?
It's a total coverage within that 300 feet. If, if you have less than 300 feet, then you have less coverage that you can put in there.
Right. But if my platted lot is less than 300 feet, I still have some buildable space on my lot, regardless of what the neighbors did.
Sure.
Okay. So for example, the old Florida Fish House over here, gosh, looks like it sits right on the lake. Right?
Yes.
Objection, we're not here on any-
The fact that it sits on the-
Mr. Shippman?
Objection, we're not here on any previously approved lots surrounding this parcel, we're here on the person-
I'm simply asking him a question to explain how he's doing his calculation.
I'm not going to overrule your objection, let him have a little leeway, so.
Okay, so the fact that the old Florida Fish House sits on the lake, that shouldn't affect the calculations on how my client builds something on their lot, should it?
It's not part of that parcel.
Right. Nor is anymore of this building part of the parcel, is it?
It's not part of it, yes, sir.
Okay. It's a now completely independent platted lot.
Okay.
Which you didn't make a calculation on what the requirements were for that lot.
Well, it would be less than what's allowed there, because we gave the leeway of more property.
Less than what's allowed?
Your property line is in here. If we shift this, that means there's less that you can put in, in that area, because your calculation is based off that.
So is it your testimony this is an unbuiltable platted lot?
It's my testimony that-
You're only allowed 25% coverage, and it's over the 25% coverage within that area.
So is it your testimony this is an unbuiltable platted lot? Because there's nothing built on it, right?
There's, well, it's been cleared. It's got stormwater management facility on it, it's got a pool on it.
Well, the pole's been removed, hasn't it?
I don't think so.
Is it your testimony that this is an unbuiltable platted lot?
No, sir, you're allowed 25% coverage on the lot.
Okay.
Clearage.
And how many square feet is 25% coverage on this platted lot?
I don't have your survey, sir. If you'll provide me that survey, we can do that calculation there simply.
So you can't tell us?
If I have your survey, yes, sir, I can.
Well, you're here, you understand, you were brought here to testify to this board. burden of proof is on you that somehow we're not allowed to build anything on this lot. So I'm asking you, as you stand here testifying before this board, can you tell me how many square feet we can build on that lot?
I can if you provide me your survey, yes, sir.
So the answer right now is no.
Within 300 feet of the lake, I can tell you the area. And I'm, and you, it has been cleared more than what the allowable is within that 300 feet.
As an engineer that does site plans, let me ask you something. One, do you ever do site plans for developers who are building subdivisions?
Yes, sir.
You've done that?
Yes, sir.
Have you done it in Walton County?
Yes, sir.
All right. When someone builds a subdivision, is it your belief that if for any period of more than one year, a house is not being built, once all the infrastructure's in, that the development order expires?
The development order is for the development itself.
Which is the infrastructure, right?
Uh, infrastructure, roads, sure.
Not the houses?
Sure.
Not the individual buildings?
That's a building permit.
Right. And so in this case, based on your review of the original development order, was all the infrastructure put in?
Well, I didn't look to see how much parking was in for that other building. I know that the original site plan had a parking lot one way, it was built a different way, so we didn't compare the parking spaces or if all of it was in per the original development, I did not compare that.
So you don't know if all the infrastructure was put in?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay, one way or the other?
No, sir.
All right. But the fact that the building itself wasn't built, the building my client's talking about building, if that's the only thing that didn't get built from the original development order, then the original development order is still valid, isn't it?
That'd be for the planning department to decide that, sir. The way I would interpret it, you'd need a building permit, is what you would need.
Okay, if you were my client's engineer, and that's the only thing that didn't get built, you would be saying development order is still valid because all the infrastructure's in.
If all, if all the infrastructure was in, yes.
Okay. For what you don't know whether it is.
Correct.
Have you reviewed the original calculations under the original development order?
Which calculation are you referring to?
For coverage and clearing out here.
Um, we looked at the original submittal, yes, sir.
Okay. And the original submittal, in addition to what's out there, had a 2,000-square-foot building on what is now my client's platted lot, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Did you review the original calculations to determine whether or not that met the Dune Lake Protection Zone requirements?
Well, again, that's where the 1.97 acres is what was the confusing part of where that number came from.
So the question is, did you review the original development order calculation?
Yes, sir.
You did. And the original development order, with its calculations that was approved by the county, provided for in addition to what's already out there, another 2,000-square-foot building, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if that, assuming all the infrastructure was put in, and the only thing left is to build the building, you believe that development order still be valid, right?
But I'm not saying that I agree with the numbers.
Well-
Because the numbers on the paper doesn't mean that I would agree with that number.
Whoever the engineer was that did the numbers, and whoever in the planning department reviewed it that did the numbers, agreed on the original development order that an additional 2,000-square-foot building would comply, right?
Sure.
All right, I'll turn it over here, no more questions.
Mr. Chairman, the county has no questions for this witness at this time.
Clarification.
Read it, Mr. Carroll.
Well, just for clarification, was it not your testimony that 39% of the lot been cleared?
That it has been cleared?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And it's your testimony that 25% is only allowed, to be clear?
Yes.
You know, just to follow up, I guess the, the survey, and I'm asking for clarity here, just the survey that you do not have, how did you figure 39%?
Because it's measured from this shoreline, you take from this shoreline 300 feet, which comes into here, and that gives you a boundary. We're looking at shoreline protection, whether it covers one parcel, two parcels, 20 parcels, it's still within 300 feet, how much you're allowed to clear. You're allowed to clear 25% of that area. He owns less than that, because it comes to the middle here. So within 300 feet, which is what we were asked to look at, you can clear that much property.
Well, wait, where's their property line?
When they did a lot split, they split it in here.
So you can't count the area that's cleared beyond their property, against them?
It was your testimony that-
We're looking at 300 feet, we're looking at your protection.
But their property is less than 300 feet?
Yes.
You can't count what's outside their property?
If I take that count, then there's less that they can clear, it is that there's a smaller parcel.
Well, you have to use the area that they're, you get 25% of what they're within.
Right.
25% within 300 feet, not within their-
No, 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 no. If your parcel is less than, no. If your parcel is less than 300 feet, you can't count the parcel across from you against you. You get 25% of what you're within, of what your parcel is on.
Okay.
Within the 300 feet.
Well, this was all one development order, that's why we looked at it as one development, because that's how it was originally permitted. It wasn't permitted as a separate lot.
That's a different-
So when you do a lot split, now he would get more, because he did a lot split, even though it was permitted as a whole before.
We kind of feel like you're confusing the issue by, by representing that that dark red line from previous testimony, that dark red line, I thought, was the property line, and therefore you was counting, but that's not true.
That's your 300-
The property line is, is substantially over towards the lake, is that not true?
This red line is 300 feet, which is-
I ain't talking about the red line, I'm going back to the property line, go back to your property line. Now, how much of his property is cleared?
From the property line, what presents-
We analyzed the 300, because that was all one development, that's how it was done.
I'm not talking about the property line, it's like, it, it's my understanding, like Tony says, you have to take and go by the lot that the gentleman owns. If, and I'm asking you a question, if you take the lot that the gentleman owns, what percentage is cleared?
We were not provided that survey.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just to, Mr. Carroll, just to make sure I'm, what you're, what you're explaining is from the very original development order, correct?
Correct.
Without any lot splits, without anything?
Correct.
So you've got roughly 400 by 2, 100, 200 feet, whatever it is, divided by 43, 560, and now you're coming off 300 feet from the water, so there's, that's where you get your number from.
Yes.
That's all I got.
Where's the property line on the, on that drawing? About where is that property line?
Let me through this part a little bit.
When was that property line created? Was that a result of the amendment to the development order?
No, that was 2013, as I presented already.
They came and did a lot split.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Oh, may I ask one, one redirection?
Sure.
Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Carroll, do you know of anything in the Walton County code as it relates to coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone that allows a lot owner, whether platted or unplatted, to disregard the coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone portions of the code?
No, sir.
That's all I have, thanks. Um, I want to address now, if I could, members of the board, the issue regarding the stormwater management and the flooding problems as they exist before the current construction even started. Uh, Walton County Comprehensive Plan, Objective 1.1 dash 4.3, Walton County shall continue to monitor, protect, and enhance the world's rare and unique water features in the series of coastal Dune Lake watersheds through responsible stormwater management. I'm going to show you, uh, pictures of the, what is the current property that's the subject of this development order. You can see, looking out from my client's property, Old Florida Fish House, looking to the south towards 30A. You can see the completed commercial building where there's a car park. You can see a culvert there where the water drains off of the eastern portion of that, uh, original parcel into this obviously depressed area, which functions essentially as a stormwater collection area, the entire depressed parcel. The next picture shows that culvert up close, and you can see that it's on a downward angle. It's a, again, depressed area there where the water goes down and collects, uh, and the water from any of this parcel to the east floods into that area. The walkway that cuts down from east to west, the middle of the subject parcel, has a, a, a portion of it that you can see that is open underneath, which allows water to travel from where the originally designed stormwater pond was supposed to be, flowing through that where water is apt to go where it wants to, to the area beyond that closer to 30A. Next picture is coming from 2014.
Mr. Pleat?
Yes, sir.
Could you back up to that other picture, please?
Yes, sir.
Whereas, where is that little makeshift culvert relative to the pond on the previous?
I'm going to, I'm going to go back two more and show you if I could, Mr. Carroll, and I. If you're, if you're looking at that walkway, you can kind of see it there.
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
I got it, I got it.
Um, again, going back to 2014 during the significant rain event, you can see that the entire parcel, which is the subject parcel we're here on today, essentially serves as a collection area for the area's stormwater, all of which collects there instead of directly flowing, uh, into the Dune Lake. Uh, but that's, that's the, the real, real world, on-the-ground reality for what happens when it rains. And I will note parenthetically that you're going to see in a moment, the original construction of the proposed second building was a slab construction. The current construction that was approved in this development order is on pilings, for obvious reasons. They know this is going to flood there, and they asked to change that original conception of a building, so they could put it up on pilings. Another picture showing the flooding as it comes into my client's parcel, uh, that's the walkway into Old Florida Fish, Fish House. Some, uh, off-b buildings on my client's property, completely flooded. And again, this is still the same timeframe in, uh, 2014 during an extended storm. You can see where the, we're looking out the culvert that we showed before that descended into this bowl. It's completely now leveled, the water with the parking lot that exists. Uh, you can see the entire parcel is flooded. Another view off of my client's property looking towards 30A. And I'm going to go to a picture taken in the fall of 2015 during a two-day rain event. We're at that culvert again, which is on the bottom portion. You can see the complete parcel was flooded even into my client's parcel up to the building itself. Another view from that same time period of the water rushing into that depressed bowl area. A view of the flooding and the walkway to my client's restaurant. Um, this is going back to, uh, 2004, this next slide. This is what was the original site and geometry plan. And you can see where they have the entrance coming off of 30A, the area where the current commercial building on the east part of the parcel exists. And I will note once again, the development order that they're seeking to amend listed 1.46 acres as the total parcel area. That hash-marked area to the middle of that, uh, rectangle is where a proposed second building had been discussed back in 2004. Uh, that proposed building on this, you can see from this aerial, would be south of the walkway, leaving the area north of the walkway to serve as the entire stormwater management collection area. And as we've seen from those pictures, the water goes everywhere it wants to on that lot. I just threw this in to note that the, in the technical review, this is a, uh, this Eastern Lake Village is in a Category 2.3 Hurricane Evacuation Zone and being built in a Category 5 Storm Surge Zone. Going back to November of 2006, we're about, we're less than a month before the actual original development order was issued. There is a letter here from Jim Harmon, Development Order Inspector, uh, to the file and copying other, uh, folks that may have been apparently at that time on the TRC or working with the staff. Again, we're on a different development order, different, uh, building permit number, uh, different parcel number. On the bottom, it says the western building indicated on the approved plans was not built. If and when- If and when this building is constructed, a separate inspection will be necessary to verify compliance with the approved plans." And I will note, the file in this case does not show complete plans for that second building. It shows elevations of the second building, but no further plans for that building. November sixth, two thousand and six, this is from Dean Burgess, who's an area engineer working for the applicant at the time, which was the Village LTD, Eastern Lake Village LTD. And in this letter to Mr. Harmon, the Development Order Inspector, on behalf of his, on behalf of the applicant, he says, "In number one, the western building was not constructed. The building was planned to include two thousand square feet of retail and two residential units. Not constructing this building allows for a reduction in parking of ten spaces after twenty percent reduction is taken out. That clearly shows a quid pro quo. There was a decision made by the applicant that they were not going to build a second building, and as a result, the parking requirements were reduced in order to issue the development order a few weeks later." So those, both those letters indicate a change of decision by the applicant to not include the western building as part of the development order that they were seeking from the staff. Excuse me. In April twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen, I put this in here because this is, when I went through the entire file, I was trying to find when in time there was an attempt to revive this development order after the completion of construction in oh six on the issuance of the oh-four development order. And what I found is that Mr. Ed Stanford, who's an area engineer working for the applicant in this case, had made inquiry to Matt Carpenter of the planning department. They said, "According to this development order, this project, it was approved for two buildings." The response is, we're going to see this same language over and over and over again from the first time there's inquiry about reviving this order. The response is, "Providing what is built is consistent with what was approved to be built, the project is in building permit state as all infrastructure is in place." That was the position taken by staff upon the initial inquiry. They stay with that position, they were, in my opinion, as you see from the evidence, they were unwilling to modify from that position even though requests were being made about these very issues that I'm talking about here today. Again, Mr. Carpenter is doubling down on this communication with Mr. Stanford on May twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. He talks about the development order approving two buildings. The first building was approved for the six thousand square foot, et cetera. Again, the same language we saw in the previous letter, "Providing what is built is consistent with what was approved to be built, the project's in the building permit state." You're going to see an elevation of the building that was proposed, the western building back in oh-four. It was not on pilings, it's a different roof, roof structure, it did not have porches, which the current one does. It was, it's a different building than the one that was contemplated in two thousand and six. In December of two thousand and fourteen, this is Cindy Meadows, County Commissioner, who is taking a look at this parcel and asking questions of staff. "Please confirm," going to staff, "please confirm this development order that covers the entire parcel was allowed to split the development into two lots, Parcels One and Two. Is the development order approved for the whole property expired?" Same question, the same issue I've raised here today. "Also, it looks like the three hundred-foot CDL protection zone will affect this property as well. There is a three hundred-foot setback shown on the original survey." So Commissioner Meadows is asking specific questions, hoping to get specific answers to those questions. Here's a response from Matt Carpenter in January of two thousand and fifteen. This is page forty-nine. Cindy, please see the attached letter from the status, on the status of Eastern Lake Village Development Order. Providing what is.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, Mr. Blake, up there.
Oh, I'm sorry. That should be forty-nine. Maybe it's a different number of years. It, it says, "Please see the attached letter detailing the status of Eastern Lake Village Development Order." Again, the same language, "Providing what is built is consistent with what was approved to be built, the project's at the building permit stage as all infrastructure is in place." Exact same language, no answer to the question about the coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to object to this because frankly, what an individual county commissioner sends in an email asking a question is totally irrelevant to the issue of development order. This wasn't before the county commission. The fact that an individual county commissioner asks a question, in fact, I would even venture to say it's probably improper. I recall reading in that grand jury report she decided to do that.
Objection, objection to the salacious reference.
To the, to the issuance of building permit, which is what they're appealing, what a county commissioner asks. If there was some question by the planning department or somebody who was making a decision on this, I would see how it's relevant. But what Commissioner Meadows did or didn't do, and what kind of answers she got, when it's not before the county commission, is absolutely irrelevant.
Sustained, I agree.
May I, at least for the record, respond to the objection?
Do you can.
This, I have the burden of proof on behalf of my client to prove by preponderance of the evidence the issues that I've raised. This is within the staff file, it's public record, it wasn't contained in some separate file. It is in the staff's file that is part and parcel of everything they looked at in order to reach conclusions in this case issuing the order. In that, you have one of their bosses, if you will, the county commissioner, asking a specific question. I intend to show a thread, not with just the county commissioner herself, but with TRC members and other members who are asking these very same questions and not getting responses. That is the purpose of my including it, that even a county commissioner and TRC members, everybody asking these questions never got an answer. And so that's the purpose, and I understand you've, you've sustained the objection.
Sustained.
Mr. Pleat, from my understanding, though, that what you're reading into the record is not a question by Commissioner Meadows, but if I'm looking at the right thing, it's actually the response by the planning manager of P and D.
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Moving to the next item on here, I had this slide included in here because one of the staff members, Hal Laird, in February of two thousand and fifteen, was working for the staff on this applicant's file. Later, as you'll see, as the evidence will show, Mr. Laird in September of two thousand and fifteen left the employ of Walton County staff, planning staff, and immediately was hired by the applicant in this case, as attorney, in fact, to pursue the approval of this application. At a minimum, I would submit, that is a bad practice to have members of the staff working on an applicant's file that's not been finalized, immediately upon leaving, getting hired by the very same applicant on the file he was working on, to champion the cause of the applicant with staff that he had worked with.
And I'm going to object and ask that to be struck, what possible relevance does that have as to whether or not my client met the requirements of the code?
And the county joins in that objection too.
I mean, we could get into there, I mean, this county, we all know there's like gobs of lawsuits going back and forth. Mr. Laird, he won the plaintiffs. What relevance does that have to anything we're talking about here?
It involves speculation.
Sustained what you said again.
I've included this slide because as part of the analysis in this case, staff, one of the staff members who was working for the county at the time, was reviewing the application and assisting determining whether or not it was to be approved. Later, the same staff person is hired by the applicant to champion the cause of this application, and I'm pointing it out because I think it's an irregular proceeding.
What relevance does that have? You know.
We, we allowed you a little bit of Lee Wade, we're going to allow him this one. Okay?
The next slide is.
My objection to it.
Overbore.
The next is again February tenth, two thousand and fifteen, from Cindy Meadows to staff, or was, was asking questions again about this particular parcel. She noticed two things, the coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone's only a hundred feet, and the swimming pool has no setback from the adjacent property. This was approved in ninety-four, it was actually two thousand and four, built, sat dormant for fourteen, fifteen years, which is actually eight or nine. "Please show me how the plan meets the three hundred-foot CDL setback, the twenty-five percent clearing and other standards spelled out in the CDL protection zone." Still hasn't gotten an answer to the question from staff.
And I object, again, it's on the.
We, we dealt that issue, I go, and I sustain, and let's leave the letters of the, of those out, because we don't need to address that.
And I would, I would just note for the record, this is, this comes from the staff applicant's file. It, I have to presume that everything in that file was considered when the development order was approved. I'm not bringing this from an outside source, this is the county's file on this case. Next is a picture of this pole that's lot, that's laid fallow for many, many years. Here we have a staff member, Tommy Highnote, March second, two thousand and fifteen. He makes a note on this, he said, "I saw, I went to the site to visit the Eastern Lake Village to look at the stormwater and general development order plan last week. There are, there are some obvious discrepancies between what was planned compared to what got put on the ground with the stormwater and parking. As to the issues, whether all the infrastructure was in place, clearly, Mr. Highnote, in March of two thousand and fifteen, when he walks the property, says, specifically, there are discrepancies between what was planned and what got put on the ground in regard to stormwater." Next, February eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, this goes to the issue of the expiration of the original development order. You'll see in this a communication from Mr. Carpenter to Vivian Schammel. He says, "We are considering a new procedure," in quotes, "for reviving managing these old unbuilt phases of legacy DOs that got caught up in the Great Recession. I point this out because this is an indicia that the staff was making up procedures on its own that were not found in the Land Development Code, some new procedure that staff apparently was going to put in place without approval. And on legacy DOs, I've looked at the definition sections of the Land Development Code, there is no definition of what a legacy DO is. I do know, as of February eighteenth, staff reviewing this application was using new procedures, and considering this a legacy DO, whatever rights that comes with, I don't know because it's not defined." Here's the pre-application notes on the actual development order request that brings us here today. In this, it says, "The site has forty-four," and this is in two thousand and fifteen, August of two thousand and fifteen. "The site has forty-four existing parking spaces." It does not. This was a lot split. They are showing ten parking spots on it. They're trying to rely on the forty-four, they're saying, or the forty-five, that was part of the original DO for the entire parcel. This parcel owner does not own Eastern Lake Village Association's parking lot. They don't have any rights to that parking lot. So the reference in the trying to piggyback on the order when it was convenient is misplaced here. There's a dock on the site, it was not originally approved for commercial uses, DO amendment would be required to approve the commercial use of the dock as currently proposed."
Let's go back to your parking. On the.
Yes, sir.
Application, the site shows forty-four, and you say there are only ten?
I'm, I'm saying that they're, they're clearly relying on the original development order's parking for the parcel that was split off that they don't own. That was my point. Those, those, those parking. Those forty-four are found here on a parcel they don't own.
But now, we, we, you know, we don't need to determine the lot has been separated. We don't need to determine that lot is less than the original, so the forty-four is not part of this new parcel.
That's, that's exactly my point, Mr. Chairman.
And you said, now, you're saying there's only ten, when they represented there was forty-four?
They're, when convenient, they rely on the original development order. When convenient, they say we're our own parcel, which they are, different parcel, different parcel number.
Okay.
I will briefly address this letter from Hal Laird to Mr. Dice. He's now the attorney, in fact, for, working for the applicant, and he's urging the staff to move forward and approve the application. And this is the actual agent affidavit filed with the staff in the staff file where Kotomolo is indicating to the staff that their attorney, in fact, is Hal Laird. I want to show the recent developments and the different machinations of the proposed building. This is in two thousand and fifteen, December two thousand and fifteen. In this proposed, this proposal for this development order that they're seeking, it shows the existing conditions. It shows where the original stormwater pond north of the walkway was to, to appear. At that point, a few months ago, they were going to build more parking in this parcel in addition to that which exists on the eastern parcel with Eastern Lake Village Association. They were going to move the retention pond, the stormwater pond. The existing approved rating and drainage plan is show, showed here, again, showing where the proposed second building was going to go in oh-four, and the drainage plan.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I want to object to this because what we're hearing on is what actually got approved. What got approved was a sixteen hundred square foot footprint with, I believe it was eight parking spaces, because that's what the code applied.
Object to the speaking objection, if there's a specific objection, I'd like to hear it.
Well, we're hearing about what actually got approved, not what they applied for and got turned down. So what relevance does this have?
I'm glad to tie it in, Mr. Chairman, I just haven't gotten there.
We're going to allow them to tie it in, and we're going to allow you to take and address it.
The reason this plan had to change is because they also wanted to put water retention under their building to accommodate the parking. They could not do that, the mosquito control board did not want under the building stormwater drainage. I will submit to the members of this board that the water's going there anyways, because the pilings are there, the depression is there, the whole reason they're putting it on pilings, I submit, is because they know the water's going to collect there anyways. In the next.
Let's, let's, you know, I'm still having a little issue understanding, the application showed forty-four parking spaces.
Yes, sir.
And his objection just clarified, it went from a two thousand square foot structure to a sixteen hundred square foot structure with eight parking spaces, is that correct?
I know that the size that was approved is the size you referenced, yes.
That is different than the application?
It's different, the application, different than the originally proposed building. The building itself is a different structure, which is the slide I have up now.
Okay.
This is different from the building that was contemplated in oh-four, where they had some elevation shown on the building. This building has a different roof structure, it has, it has decking, it's up on pilings, the original building was not up on pilings. Here's a picture of the construction that's begun within the last couple of weeks, you can see the pilings being put in place for the structure that is going on this lot. And it'll be up for the board to decide if this building is truly consistent with that which was, in the argument is, was approved back in two thousand and four.
Back in two thousand and four, you said it was going to be on a slab, is that correct?
Yes.
And they went from a slab to piers?
It, it is a different building, yes.
Okay.
This is the pilings, as you can see, the first floor construction had begun, has begun. This is a picture from the staff's file of the few, the elevation of the building that was proposed. Again, there weren't specs and details on this building, but this was the original building that was proposed. Here is what I found in the file, communication to Mr. Underwood on staff from the members of Prepple Rish Engineering Firm. And you can see, this is January fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, I believe it's in relation to their work on the Technical Review Committee, and they raised questions here about, under engineering comments, "The developer falls within the three hundred-foot coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone." It goes on to state the, the section of the Comprehensive Plan policy that I've already read several times, and also notes that the projects located with the coastal, within the coastal Dune Lake watershed require a hundred percent of the treatment volume required. This is from the Environmental Department, and I'm going to skip to the next page of this report, and this is dated January of this year, under Environmental Concerns, going down to number four, and number five, I'm sorry, it states, after quoting the, the language again, "Please demonstrate," this is just a few months ago, "please demonstrate how the proposed development will meet all the requirements of the Walton County Comp Plan C one four one eight," which states, "preserving at least seventy-five percent of the portion of the parcel which is within the three hundred-foot CDLPZ and landward of the initial one hundred feet shoreline buffer as open space for all new development, redevelopment." feet shoreline buffer as open space for all new development redevelopment." As part of the consideration of this development order, I note this, the correspondence that I found within the staff's file, that Mr. Carpenter indicated that there will be no use of the dock for commercial purposes, and therefore, no new parking will be constructed. The swimming pool is to be removed. However, in February of 2016, the applicant, on the issue of the dock, said that he agrees to restrict the use of the dock associated with the property if a building permit and CO are issued. The restriction shall be that the owner shall not permit commercial rentals of kayaks and paddle boards from the dock or shoreline. That's not a blanket restriction for commercial use. That's just a statement that for paddle boards and kayaks, they will not be used. The owner reserved the right to apply for the, to the planning department for modification of the DO and property use in the future. There's a technical review committee report that was issued on March 2nd, 2016. Within that report, there's some reference in here that there were no public comments. There was a, a public comments that were attempted to be brought in this case. Certainly, Mike Ryan has consistently been in communication with staff about objections to this particular Also, again, under environmental comments within this report, "please demonstrate how the proposed development will meet the requirements of the Walton, the Walton portion of the parcel," I'm sorry, "the Walton County Comprehensive Plan in the section that I've read previously." So, we're still, now we're in March of this year, same questions that have been asked routinely throughout this file as to the coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone. I could find no written correspondence indicating an answer to that. I've already addressed this particular issue, so I'm going to skip past this. This next picture is the final approved plan. This is from the May of 2016 amendment to the existing...
Did you want to say what page you're looking at?
Uh, that, that should be just after page eighty-five.
Eighty-four.
And, and, all right, eighty-four. It says, "Final Approved Plan" on top.
Yeah.
Okay. This, this is, this was approved on the amendment to the development order that was requested by the applicant. I have this in there for a couple of reasons, but most importantly, you can see that the new building, unlike the original proposed building, is going to have gutters, and it's going to gutter its rain, the collection, whatever water source it comes from. That water is going to go off a drain to the north between my client's property line in the back of the building into the stormwater area that was originally designed, but that's where that water's going to flow. That's different than the original contemplated building. There was a technical review committee on April 6th, 2016, a committee, a public hearing. I have transcript from that hearing, and I have a couple of items in here I want to read into this record. Chairman Dice said, "I mean, the problem here is this was approved in '04. We have a development order that was approved by the BCC in '04. I think our scope is limited as far as what we're looking at. This is not a brand-new project, as I see it, even though we have different parcel number, different owner, lot split, et cetera." So, are you reaching the conclusion that, was my question, Mr. Dice said, "The only conclusion I'm reaching is that 2004, it was approved, and it has, and it expired." And I say, "That's my point." Chairman Dice says, "Let me speak, please. Has it expired, Matt? Has the development order expired?" The response was, "The structure was completed as designed." Also, at that same hearing, a member of the public, Ms. Garner Chandler, asked some questions about the coastal Dune Protection Zone. "My name is Garner Chandler, and I'm asking on behalf of the coastal dunes for absolute confirmation that no more than twenty-five percent of the land within the setbacks will be disturbed. Because this is considered a less-than-minor development, there will be no further hearings on this, from what I understand." Chairman Dice said, "Well, I think the issue we're having is this is prior approved. The DO has already been approved in '04. We have limited authority to change what's already been approved." Mr. Stanford also testified at that particular hearing, and Mr. Dice asked him, "Well, how many are required parkings, how many are required parking spots?" Mr. Stanford said, "We are required to have forty-two spaces based on our impasse, and we have forty-two spaces." As I've indicated earlier, that's relying on the other parcel and the original development order on land that they don't own. I have a slide from Count's Resort, which is one of the members and who managed the condominium association on the existing parcel. I have it in here to show that there's a statement from Eastern Lake Village Condominiums that it's a separate parcel. It's not included and cannot be combined with the parcel included in the development order. He says, "In regard to reaching the total parking provided, forty-two, to reach that required number of spaces, the applicant has included parking spaces located on the property of Eastern Lake Village Condominiums. The adjoining property will have no access rights or easement to utilize any of the parking spaces located in Eastern Lake Village Condominium. The stormwater is also a concern to that association, conditions of ponding and flooding that currently exist with normal rains."
I'm getting, I'm getting a little, I don't know, you keep referring to forty-four, forty-two parking spaces, and I don't understand, I don't understand how that continues to be an issue.
Because, because you heard, you heard argument today that they're only to consider the existing parcel when it comes to any kind of calculations on the coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone, but when it's, when they want parking, they want to rely on the old development order.
But they're not asking for parking. They, they, they have aid approved, to my understanding.
I, I can only tell you what they put on here and what they keep referencing. So, the actual development order, which is up on the screen now, again, says it's a, an amendment to a prior order. They're asking to amend the 2004 order. It's a different parcel number, however, and they again say that it's 1.97 acres, obviously trying to refer back to the original total parcel, which the development order says is 1.46, not 197.
But there again, I want clarity here, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Is there a survey that shows that it's only 1.46, or is there a survey that shows it's 1.97? You referring that it's 1.46, and they're referring it's 1.97. Do you have the survey showing that?
Uh, I don't have the survey in my hand, Mr. Chairman. I'm going by what this county approved in its original development order. The original development order is unequivocal. It's a 1.46 parcel.
It's a separate question, is that all right?
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm getting a little confused about the 1.47 and the 1.97. You say it's, it's, you're saying that the county approved a parcel. Explain that to me, because if it's a parcel...
I'm just trying, I'm, I'm, forgive me. I'm just trying to answer the question because clearly in this file, there are questions about, is it 146? Is it 197? The development order states it's 1.46 for the entire rectangle parcel that was approved for development order in 2004. I'm simply trying to answer that question that obviously was a question in this file.
But the parcel that they refer to here was, assign a parcel number later than 2004? That parcel was created in 2013? Is that correct?
2013. My point is, this whole parcel, which was the development order seeking to amend, this whole parcel is 1.46 acres. That's what the order says, 1.46. In the actual development order that was issued, I want to point out also...
Tony had a question.
Yeah. My concern is that we keep looking at the old versus, but we're really not getting to the new, which is the only thing to me that really matters. I see what looks like eight parking spots that are being allocated west, southwest of the new property line as of 2013, 2014. How many parking spots does their development require?
My understanding that it's ten.
Ten?
Yes, sir.
How many parking, how many parking spaces?
Well, are you talking, are you talking about the original development order?
No, because resorts say that they're not sharing. Development order says they are sharing. Let's deal with one at a time. In terms of what's proposed, actually proposed, how many parking spots do they have on their portion, and how many are required?
And this is where it's important semantics. The, this is an amendment to the existing development order which presumes a viable unexpired development order.
I understand, and that's a separate issue from what I'm trying to get at.
All right. And I'm sorry, your question again, sir?
That's right. I'm just trying to understand, on their, just on their parcel, just on their portion within that overall development order, how many parking spaces are being provided versus what's required just on that portion, seeing as how resort properties have said that they are not allowed to use their parking?
It's my understanding, staff can answer this question for themselves. It's my understanding staff is requiring ten parking spots.
Okay. How many are actually proposed? Is that what was proposed?
That's, what was proposed is forty-four.
Well, not according to some of the argument, but the question is, what is on their parcel? And if staff required ten, I'm assuming, unless I hear otherwise, that there's ten on them.
You'll have to ask staff those questions because I obviously have a problem with how they're analyzing that issue.
Okay.
But I want to point out this, going back to the expiration of the development order. And please, if you could bear with me on this logic. The logic is that this is a development order that even though there was no building in 2000, in, just excuse me, please.
This tells you forty-two.
Please. That the development order could be, the second building can be built whenever. And I think a fair question, and not necessarily rhetorical, is fifty years from now, a hundred years from now? But the underlying premise is that this is a valid development order because there was work that was completed and the notion that there was infrastructure that was put in place. There clearly was no work done on this parcel for eight years. So, that notion, if you follow to its logical conclusion, is in 2050, someone, subsequent purchaser of this lot, five, six more owners down the line, could come in and pull permits and build that building. And I think that defies what really the intent of the code is as to the expiration of a development order.
However, the development order was considered substantially complete at that time.
Bear, just bear with me if you could a little bit here. If that's the case, when this development order is issued, why do they have the very same admonitions that you have to complete it within a year? If that second building, because under the theory the infrastructure's in place, can be built in 2050, 2075, why do you even have to have a warning and a note with the very same admonition to this applicant today saying you have to build it within a year?
Because they're making modifications.
Then they're, then they're altering the, gets back to the issue of the second building that was supposedly approved.
But that's what makes it a minor
But, but...
...development order, by definition.
But, no, the position is, you saw Matt Carpenter, the reason I referenced his quote throughout, "If it's consistent with what was originally approved, you can build it." It's a different...
Consistent doesn't mean it's exactly the same. It just means that it's consistent.
I understand. But it's, it's a different building, but if that, just bear with me a second. If, if that original notion is, you can build it whenever you want, now or a hundred years from now, there should be no reason to say the very same thing in this new order, which is the same language. You got a year to build it. If you, if you don't substantially attempt to build it in a year, it's going to expire. So, the county can't have it, and the staff can't have it, have it both ways. Either that, that development order expiration date means something, or the public needs to be aware that it, it doesn't necessarily.
Comparable square footages, comparable uses, if I, by that standard, you couldn't finish Alice Beach. You couldn't finish Rosemary Beach. You couldn't finish any community unless there's a hundred percent activity for any, no, it's not.
Big, hear me out, big difference. And this was recently addressed in the Court of Appeals on a case that's very close to home. It was Howard Group involving a parcel in Sandestine that was subsequently sold, and the question was, "Do the development rights transfer with that property?" This came down in late last year. Judge Green was the judge. He was reversed. And among other things, the holding in that case found that a deeds language alone, if you remember, there's a lot split and there's a deed out, right? The deeds language alone granting legal title to the property made no mention of development rights. The person who was seeking to have development rights attached said, "The only claim to development rights rests on the naked title to the real estate." And then in quoting in the holding from another case, "Land development rights, which are a conditional right granted and controlled by the county government, are not included as a matter of law in a deeds general terms of conveyance, giving a grantee rights and privileges belonging to a piece of real property." If this entire parcel had been sold, it's a different story. But he split, the original owner, Eastern Lake Village LTV, splits this lot off. So, now you have a separately deeded parcel, different parcel number, different development order. And as this case, this holding from the First DCA just says, "Development rights don't transfer with a naked deed."
Question on, on that case, was it the seller that was trying to withhold the development rights?
No, it was the purchaser who was trying to assert that they had development rights to the land because they were deeded the land.
And who was opposing it? Residents or the seller?
There, there are a lot of parties to this case, but the fundamental issue that this addresses was, one of the parcels was purchased by someone who thought they had development rights. And the court held, reversing Judge Green, saying, "That's not true with a naked title and nothing else regarding it." So, that's the distinction here. We don't have the same original parcel owner selling the whole parcel with his development order. You have a parcel that's carved off and sold, for whatever reason, that, that particular owner felt that that parcel was not as valuable to him anymore.
Did the resort properties oppose this project?
I'm sorry?
Did resort properties, the adjoining property, the, well, the extension of the property oppose this project?
Are you talking about the finished completion, the Eastern Lake Village?
The completed portion, yes.
Um, they're not part of this appeal, if that's the question. In summary, and I know it's been a long night for you all, and I appreciate the, the attention through all of this. Going back to the issues that I've mentioned, the development order had expired, and it was not to be, should not have been relied upon in moving forward with this second building, which in my opinion, even though I respectfully understand disagreements, is not substantially the same as the building that was proposed back in that time period. Most importantly, you had a lot split in 2013, a new parcel number, new, new development order number. This parcel is no longer part of the original DO, even though it's called an amendment to that DO. The stormwater management issue is real, and it's significant, and has to be looked at by this board. Approving this project, it's, which is already underway, unfortunately, is going to further exasperate, which is a very bad stormwater problem for that property. And we know from the one letter we saw from staff that what was on the ground was not necessarily was what was on the plans. But you can do the eyeball test, too. That's part of the evidence in this case, when you see the flooding that occurs on that particular lot. And finally, if the county truly finds inviolate the protection of our coastal Dune Lake protection, this is a referendum case, in my opinion, and I submit to you all, on the issue of whether the county means what it says. Because you already have testimony that thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent of the original development order was in violation of the twenty-five percent disturbance. Now, you're having additional development on that property, which only disturbs it more. So, there has to be some, some, someone accountable somewhere which says, "You know what? This section means something to us, and we're going to enforce it." Again, I appreciate your time, and I ask on behalf of my client that you reverse the action of the, of the staff and rescind the development order that was issued.
Mr. Fleet?
I have a couple of questions.
Would you agree that this is a parcel of record that he is allowed to build on?
Uh, no, I, I disagree. I think the coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone prohibits any further building on this lot. I disagree with that position.
So, this is a lot of record that cannot be built on? That's your opinion?
My, yes. My opinion is that there's no exception within the Land Development Code that carves out a niche for any parcel to ignore the coastal Dune Protection Zone provisions. And they apply to this lot or any lot along the coastal Dune Lakes. Otherwise, then, then if there's going to be, you know, multiple exceptions to that rule, which there aren't in the law, then it means nothing.
When was this lot created?
2013.
That's when it became a, a lot?
That's, that's when it was purchased by the applicant. That is correct.
And it wasn't already a lot of record?
No, it was, it was part of the original DO order in 2004.
Okay.
It had a, that was a different parcel number.
However, the analysis that we're looking at is based on looking at as a single parcel, a single development order. I understand that we have to look at it in terms of, yes, they're using it to their benefit when they can piggyback onto the existing former development order. when they can piggyback onto the existing former Development Order versus plating new property and then the benefit of diminishing the impact. Do you have a lot coverage analysis of the new parcel? In other words, do you have that analysis that shows that they're over 25% on the new parcel?
I think Mr. Carroll addressed that issue, and certainly I can submit.
He's, the problem is that the, with the final approved plan, I don't know if there's a landscape plan that shows that they're revegetating, all I see is a footprint that I can't measure, I can't scale because it's too small.
But you do have numerous pictures, and you can look at those pictures and see.
But the pool's going away, and that's, the pool's not on-
But that's already disturbed land, that pool.
But you can replant.
I'm not aware of mitigation provisions within that section.
No disturbance, I mean, it's all been disturbed at some point. I mean, to say it's untouched ever is-
It's not, the portions of it are not touched.
So you're saying once the portion is disturbed, it can never be recouped, it can never be revegetated, suitable for-
Under that theory, respectfully, I could clear cut my coastal Dune Lake Preservation Zone lot, and then justify by saying, I'm mitigating, I'm planting plants in it. So what I've ripped up and torn away and bulldozed, just ignore that because I'm going to plant some new stuff. I think that's frankly folly to believe that if that's what allowed that the Dune Lakes would be protected at all.
That doesn't make any sense to me, I'm sorry.
Let me tell you again, under that theory, I could clear cut this lot from front to back, and I could say, I know I'm not supposed to disturb the 100-foot and not supposed to disturb 75% of the rest of it, so I'm going to replant whatever, sawgrass, oak trees, whatever, I'm going to try to replicate what Mother Nature's already done. And I think that, respectfully, from my vantage point, that defies the very idea of preserving what Mother Nature has put in place along these coastal Dune Lakes. And in the interim, while I've cleared and awaiting plants to grow, you got stormwater runoff, you got all the problems associated with the clear cutting.
Well, that's why there's penalties and actions that are taken against people that-
But if, under the comp plan-
But wait a second, but when you say that if someone does clear cut that, you can never build on that again, is absurd.
I think you could attempt to, but you're going to have to understand that when the analysis is done, they're going to see that it had certain percentage of disturbance already, and you can't undo that and say, I'm going to plant on this and then I can clear more. Because, again, then you're going to have people taking advantage of that notion, and they're going to say, I'm going to clear it all. And so you got to have, if what was in that originally read comp plan provision, that these are world-class treasured natural wonders, then you've got to be vigilant, you've got to actually try to protect them, and letting people clear and say I'm going to replant, in my opinion, completely is inapposite to the intent of that goal.
Tony, let's move along, go ahead.
What's the distance between the water line and the property line on the east end there? I mean, it's got to be less than 300 feet, what, 250 maybe?
This is, I know this is the 100-foot mark.
Right. So, that's 300, so what's from the property line to the water?
This is 100-foot.
Right.
They can't say that without a survey, they don't have a survey.
You can ballpark it.
That is on the original site plan that was approved in the DO. These are engineered measurements from the original DO, so they do exist.
I'm trying to find it for you, Bill, but I can't read this.
It's got to be roughly 250. We can get that, are you three?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm done, yes, thank you.
The reason I was asking that question, Chairman, is what can they build if that's 250, or if you're picking a number?
Let's let him sit down, and we will ask the planning department to put their case on, and we can, because I'm still confused about 1.47, 1.97.
I think I got that one.
Well, you don't, because you don't know how big it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pleat. We, it has been requested that we could take a break if that's satisfactory for everybody, we'll take a 15-minute break. All right, Scott, you got 15 minutes. Make it a short 15 minutes.
I can order your service and my medicine.
You're going to go take your medicine?
I can get a prescription for that. I can get a prescription to have insurance covered.
Want some gum?
No, thank you. I'm good, thanks.
We call the meeting back to order.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm going to keep this sweet and short as possible because I know you all have been here for a long time.
Go ahead, state your name for the record, please.
Sure, excuse me, sorry, this is Carrie Parsons from the Law Firm of Neighbors Givlin and Nickerson out of Tallahassee. I'm here on behalf of the Walton County staff this evening. I just want to clarify for the board, as Mr. Vallee stated, this is, you're here tonight on an appeal of a minor modification to a Development Order. I do not believe that you have the Development Order that was approved or the Technical Review Committee report in its totality at this point in time, so we have asked your recording secretary to make coffees, which she graciously did, and make them a part of the record this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Is there an exhibit?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
This will be Staff Exhibit 1.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn it over in a moment to Matt Carpenter to kind of give you a narrative, I think that's probably the most efficient way to get out all of the information to you this evening. Prior to doing that, there was mention, and I just want to address this, of certain case law with regards to transferability of Development Rights. That case law, which was cited, that came down from the First DCA, specifically was pertaining to developments of regional impact, which are completely different beasts, have their own set of rules, and aren't before you this evening. And it had to do with the transferability of Development Rights within a development of regional impact, and that's specifically how the First District Court of Appeals narrowed it down to. That being said, again, tonight before you is a minor modification Development Order, and whether or not it was appropriately approved, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Carpenter at this point in time. And for the record, Mr. Carpenter, can you state your full name?
Yes, I'm Charles McDonald Carpenter.
And how long have you worked in your capacity at the, what's your title first?
I'm the Planning Manager for Walton County. I've been employed as a planner since September 24th, 2007, for Walton County.
And are you specifically familiar with this minor modification?
I'm directly familiar with this minor modification.
Excellent, if you can give us a narrative of the background of the issue?
Gentlemen, y'all have heard my name mentioned a number of times tonight. Now you're going to hear the facts, as I know them, from me. And there's been a lot said about the county's lack of protection of the coastal Dune Lakes. First, I want to go on record to say that these coastal Dune Lakes are incredibly important to our county, and our planning department does everything that we can legally do to protect those lakes. Now with that said, in this particular case, we have a Development Order that was originally applied for in 2004, that essentially involved the area you see outlined in white on the map displayed by the appellant. Originally approved was a retail and residential building that you see constructed there, approximately a 6,000-foot square, 6,000-square-foot footprint. There was another 2,000-foot retail and residential building that had another, two dwelling units approved to go on top of the 2,000-foot retail. This Development Order was approved, the infrastructure required by the Development Order was substantially constructed within the two-year period that is required. In addition to that, the building that you see there was approved by building permit to be constructed after the infrastructure was completed and certified as complete by the Development Order Inspector. Now, much like a residential subdivision that is required to put in streets, or required to put in water and sewer, they may be required to put in a landscape buffer, or other things that are unique to that particular development site for a residential development. It goes through the plating process. That Development Order does not authorize the building of the first house in that subdivision. This Development Order didn't authorize building that building. What it authorized was building the infrastructure and accounting for the impacts of what was proposed to be built. That building that got built, and one more building that did not get built. But everything else necessary for the county to approve and for the applicant to construct was done for the 2,000-square-foot building that was originally applied for. Now, economy tanked, this went into foreclosure, we have no control over what portion of a property an app, an owner decides to mortgage. Had the economy not tanked, we wouldn't be here today. But it did. And there are lots of developments like this, or there were, throughout Walton County that could not be completed when the market crashed. And we've dealt with a number of them. And let me tell you, it's essentially forensic planning, trying to figure out what happened 10, 12, 15 years ago, that didn't get completely built out. Now new people come in and want to finish a previously approved development where all the infrastructure was substantially completed. And Mr. Pleat has told you that I wrote a letter that said, if you're proposing to build what was originally approved, and it's, the infrastructure is complete, then you're, go straight to building permit. Well, in this particular case, the applicant saw that, they saw this dock out here that was originally approved as a residential amenity, where no commercial use proposed for that dock. They decided, well, let's come in and build the building that we were already authorized to build, but we want to use this building to sell paddleboard and kayak rentals and those kinds of things. And we want to launch them from this dock, because it's a beautiful lake, and if you've ever been on a paddleboard, a kayak on one of our lakes, it's a tremendous experience. People pay thousands of dollars just to come here to do that. Well, the problem is, in this particular case, that building and that Development Order, the building that was not yet built, did not anticipate the kind of use that the present applicant was proposing to increase. Now, between the time they originally applied and the time that we issued the Development Order, there were lots of back and forth between staff, between Technical Review Committee members reviewing the plan that they had submitted, and we all said, if you're going to modify what was originally approved, we're going to have to apply the current rules, and we're going to have to re-review the whole site. And that's what all those letters that Mr. Pleat read to you mean. Now, all of that said, the only letters that really mean anything are the one that I wrote that said, if you do what was originally approved, and we confirm that all the original infrastructure's in place, and the intent of that was the same use that was originally approved, then you can build the 2,000-square-foot building without having to modify the Development Order. The reason for modifying the Development Order had to do with expanding the use. They couldn't rent kayaks and paddleboards to folks to launch from that site because they didn't have enough parking. Because if you go into a store, you may spend a few minutes in there, you go into a restaurant, you may spend an hour, hour and a half, maybe two hours. If you rent a paddleboard or a kayak, you're going to be out there half the day, so you're not going to have the parking turnover in that parking lot. So what we finally convinced them to do, which was the only thing we could approve without completely re-reviewing this development, and we believe it met the coastal Dune Lake regulations in time, at the time that it was approved, because the statistics are billboarded on the data table in the original approved site plan, demonstrating that it met the requirements at the time. And based on that, we didn't re-review all of that, we weren't allowed to. We're only allowed to review what is changing. Now, when they wanted to make a major change in the use, we were going to have to make a major review out of this. Review the coastal Dune Lake impacts, and review them against today's regulations, not the regulations that were in place when this was originally approved. And the other part of this is, we discovered that they had actually removed a couple of parking spaces from the original plan. The original plan, it can modify, but it got identified in one of the final inspections. And it got identified when we sent folks back out recently to look at it during this review process. And part of the reason, or the reason, they had to reduce from a 2,000-square-foot retail footprint and two dwelling units on top of that, to a 1,600-square-foot retail and one dwelling on top, was to fit their development impacts within the existing constructed That's what we approved. That's the Development Order we issued. Now, there were a couple of other things that we wanted them to do to improve the previous Development Order. Not to change it such that we would have to re-review it, but this Development Order, unlike what Mr. Pleat told you, originally required understory retention for this 2,000 square-foot building. That means send all the water underneath your building, just like the TDC building right across the street, where we've had tremendous problems with mold and mildew. We do everything we can to avoid allowing that now. It was a great idea back when dirt was so expensive, nobody wanted to use dirt for stormwater, or at least a great idea in the development community's mind. And that's when we got all these tiny lots, residential lots, because we could sell them for the same price we could sell the much larger lots. But we don't encourage understory retention anymore. In fact, we discourage it. It was approved on this plan, it was a bad idea. It's a bad idea in every circumstance. And we've got lots of developments that were approved mid-last decade, that because the developer did not want to use dirt for stormwater, they designed them so we had understory retention. So the water flows back up under the house. That's just not a good idea. So we discourage it, and we provided a method in this particular case to avoid it. We required the developer to reduce the footprint, which reduces the impervious surface, it reduced the parking impact to match what they actually built. The stormwater was originally designed for all of this. It's already in place. Reducing the footprint of the building, piping or guttering and piping that runoff from that reduced footprint of building into the existing stormwater pond was a modification we required. We corrected a bad idea with a small modification. The reduction in the footprint of this building and the impervious surface provided the additional capacity to put that water in that pond and not underneath the building. Now, beyond that- Now, beyond that, there was a swimming pool out here with a massive concrete deck that was just outside the 100-foot line. Or just adjacent to it on the original plan. And the reason it may be slightly different now is they suggested that that pool was slightly in the 100 feet. Well, the shoreline changes. And we measure it from Mean High Water Line, but 10 years ago, it was in a different spot. Now. I'm going to point out one other thing. This is the applicant's, the appellate's building. That is the 100-foot Coastal Dune Lake line. Half of that building is in the 100-foot no-development line. And that's not really germane to this, but I thought I'd point it out, given how much we've paid attention to that green line on that map. Half of that structure, the restaurant, is in the no-development, first 100 foot from the Coastal Dune Lake. And we're not here on that.
Wait, wait. We have an objection and...
Objection. We're not here on the Old Florida Fish House. We're not hearing when it was built and what code was in place at the time. We're here on this parcel.
Yes, sir.
I think that is relevant, and I'll rule your objection.
But back to the swimming pool that's right up adjacent to the 100 feet. We felt like it would be a much better idea for the Coastal Dune Lake for them to remove that swimming pool. For one thing, it wasn't in use. It's a liability when it's not in use. It's a liability when you don't have a lifeguard there. They didn't need it. We encouraged them to take it out and restore that area of the site. So we've reduced the impervious surface by reducing the size of the building, and we've removed the swimming pool and its massive concrete pool deck. Now, I'm going to tell you again what we did. We allowed the developer to come in and build the building that was originally approved to a size that met the infrastructure that was originally constructed. And we required him to change the county-approved stormwater plan to put the stormwater in the existing constructed location. Now, Mr. Pleat showed you a whole bunch of pictures of flooding. Those pictures, I believe, were taken during the April two-years-ago 200-year storm where we had flooding happening on the top of a hill. Where it never, ever flooded in anybody's memory. So I'm going to suggest that those pictures are not in normal condition. We had a 200-year storm. We typically designed much less than that. But in this particular case, we believe the stormwater is adequate. Our engineer from Du Barry Preble Rish reviewed this site. And all the other engineering comments, environmental comments, and planning comments that you saw, including the commissioner's inquiries, were related to when this proposal was much larger, and they were going to build the parking lot to support the use of the dock for the paddleboard and kayak launching. When that plan came forward earlier this year and was the subject of the March 2 TRC report, which he entered into record, which has absolutely nothing to do with what we're doing here today. Because all those comments resulted in them reducing the scope of the project back within the original approval. It's still within the original approval, and it's better than it was originally approved. Because we made them remove the swimming pool and all of that impervious surface. There's less runoff out there now created than was originally approved in the development order that we amended. Now, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And prior to that, Mr. Chairman, if I can just ask Mr. Carpenter just a few more quick questions. Actually, on the screen before you right here, I guess it's page 95 of the appellate's slides. It specifically, and a lot of comments were made with regards to this language in the warning and the note. Is that just general standard language you have to put in?
That's our, that is our standard boilerplate language. And by and large, on this one, there's an insignificant amount of infrastructure, one pipe that runs over to the stormwater pond. That we required them to do to improve the circumstance of this particular development.
Now, as stated by the engineer for the appellate, he stated when asked whether or not the development order, the original development order was still valid, he said that would be a planning department decision. Has the planning department made a decision as to whether that's valid?
Yes, ma'am, we have, and we make the exact same decision every time. The infrastructure required to be constructed by the development order has been certified as substantially complete by the development order inspector.
Okay. And I'm going to hand you a letter dated May 20, 2014, and it was actually, you wrote it addressed to Mr. Stanford, who is at Core Engineering and Consulting. Can you tell me specifically what the, what the letter states?
Well, this letter Mr. Pleat read a number of times. But I'll reread it. "The development order approved for this project authorizes two buildings. The first-approved building was three stories, 6,000 square feet per floor, retail, commercial on the first floor, with residential on the top two floors. First building was built. The second-approved building was two stories, 2,000 square feet per floor, with commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor. Based on the development order inspector's report, the infrastructure to support both buildings as approved has been installed. Providing what is built, is to be built, is consistent with what was approved to be built, this project is at the building permit stage as all infrastructure in place." And what that means is, if you're building a building that's no more than two stories, no more than a 2,000-square-foot footprint per floor, commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor, and in this particular case, there were two dwelling units on the second residential floor, they could build that.
And this further supports the planning development department's specific finding that this was still a valid development order?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Okay. And Mr. Chairman, if I may enter this letter into the record officially as an exhibit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the last few things I have for you is on slide number six of the appellate's presentation, he specifically sets out some issues. His first issue is that the development order expired and was not renewed, as you just stated. Is it correct that the development order is, was still valid when the modification came about?
Development order did not expire. The work required by the development order was completed.
Okay. And with regards to the second issue about both the original construction and current proposed construction violating the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone, although it, again, we're getting bogged down in this not being an issue here before them, has it been violated to the best of your knowledge?
We do not believe so.
Okay. And the stormwater system, this is number three, is inadequate, and the current construction will exacerbate the problem. Do you believe this to be correct?
No, ma'am, I do not, and we have professional engineers that have told us so.
And the last issue is that the parking in the minor modification is not adequate for the proposed construction?
That is completely incorrect. The building that is being constructed, based on the uses on the first floor and the uses on the second floor, and no commercial use of the dock, did not require the construction of any new parking. In fact, it only requires seven parking spaces, and there are 10 that are actually on the lot that the app, the applicant for the development order presently owns. Now, the reason that we've heard so much about the other 40 to 47 parking spaces is because we were looking at all the parking that was supposed to be originally constructed and comparing that to what actually got constructed. And it was substantially constructed. However, there were a couple of spaces removed to create a driveway to the adjacent restaurant next door. And because of that reduction and the reduction of one more space, they had reduced the size of the building and the proposed use of the parcel, and not use the dock for commercial purposes to be able to reduce their impact for parking and stormwater, so it fits within the original approval.
And Mr. Chairman, at this time, we have no further questions for our witness. However, I think the other parties probably do.
I guess, I'm not sure how this order goes.
Go ahead, Mr. Shipman, I'll wait for your answer.
I just have three things I want to ask. First, the original development order, just to be clear on this, provided for a 2,000-square-foot building plus the swimming pool.
Yes, sir.
And the swimming pool, do you know, is that deck and pool roughly the same footprint as the building we're building?
I haven't made that calculation, but I believe it's very similar.
So basically, what we're now doing is about half the coverage that was provided for in the original development permit.
It is substantially redexed.
And I wanted to ask you about replanting. Because I, frankly, I, I was a little surprised by the argument we heard. Doesn't the planning department, isn't it a fairly common thing where somebody cut down something inadvertently in the Dune Lake Protection Zone, and you make them come up with a mitigation plan to replant it?
Yes, sir, we do, through code enforcement.
And that happens all the time, doesn't it?
It happens more frequently than we would like, yes, but frequently.
As far as the planning department's concerned, there isn't this prohibition against replanting in a coastal dune lake protection zone? You actually, not only, I guess you could say you encourage it and require it.
Yes, sir.
And in fact, if the law was that if the land around a coastal dune lake had ever been disturbed, ever, you could never build on it, wouldn't it be virtually impossible down here to build anything around a dune lake? Because wasn't all this land either timber or cattle run on it?
Based on the history that I'm familiar with, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Carpenter, I'm going to move up here so I'm not talking to your, to your back. A couple of questions. Number one, do you have a copy of the order that you put into the evidence, Ms. Parsons? Because I want, I want Mr. Carpenter to be able to look at what I'm asking.
Sure.
There's actually a copy right there in front of you.
Very good, yes. I'm referring now to the May 20, 2016 development order. I think you have a copy of it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carpenter, on the first page, which talks back around to the issue under the request, there's a reference that the parcel question is 1.97 acre site. Is that correct?
It's essentially immaterial to what we were doing.
If you could answer the question. Does it state that there?
It's what it says, yes, sir. Did I measure it? No, sir, I did not.
I didn't ask that question. As a layperson that doesn't work every day and the work that you do here with the county, which I know you've been doing for quite a long time, is it fair for me to state that when I see that reference in a final development order, that there's some basis in fact for the determination that it's a 1.97 acre site? Is that a fair assumption?
We typically take that from the applicant's submissions.
But, but as you reviewed as a staff, this parcel, there's at least, since you're taking it from the applicants, you're presuming that that's a correct statement, correct?
Yes, sir. And if this were a brand-new development order, it would be very meaningful. But in this particular case, it doesn't mean a thing.
I understand that.
I just want to get that on the record.
And I appreciate you putting it on that record, sir, and I'm just trying to find out that it apparently means something because it's in your order, correct? And in fact, I'm going to show you what's page 24, I can get a larger version in my evidence pack, which is in fact the survey that the chairman was trying to ask questions about. This is from the lot split. And as the parcel one, what is listed on the survey from the lot split? What's the acres for the parcel?
Uh, that label says 1.46. I don't, I didn't prepare that document, and I don't know if that's accurate.
And do you, did, do you know whether the staff, as it relates to the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone percentage issue that was raised in one of the correspondence, and I referenced the actual code sections? It may be in your file. I may not have just found it, looking through it when I did. But is there some report somewhere in the portion of this year after there was a request by the TRC to address that issue? Is there somewhere in there where someone went out and did the measurements of the lot to determine what the disturbance percentage is?
No, sir, we did not re-review that.
That's all I have.
We improved what was previously...
No further questions. Thank you, sir.
We improved what was previously approved. Ten years ago.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. What relevance did the acreage have with regards to the determination necessary to be made on the minor modification?
It had absolutely no reference or no impact. It was of no importance.
Okay. And it didn't come into any of the calculations necessary?
No, ma'am, it was not involved in any calculations. We did not use that for any purpose.
Okay.
We did not need to.
Is that a standard thing that's put into your development agreements? What the acreage is? Okay. We have, or I have no further questions for this witness.
One more recross if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Let's make it quick.
Very well, thank you. If there's a need at some point to measure the amount of disturbance in relation to the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone percentages, wouldn't that have to be done against the measurement of the entire parcel that's referenced in the development order? And the size of the order would have relevance into those percentage measurements?
If this were a new development order where we were applying the Coastal Dune Lake protections that had not previously been applied, yes, sir, it would.
Is the, is the status position to not apply Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone criteria to this approval of this order?
We did not re-review that for that purpose because we were not required to.
No further questions.
We're going to give each of you the opportunity to, are you, are you done? Do you have another?
I just have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let's, I think we've heard enough of this now, you know, and...
Oh, and it was just based off of the rebuttal of my witness?
Make it real quick, and this is it.
Just a quick question for you with regards to the acreage. If there was a alleged violation out there of the Coastal Dune Lakes and you were doing code enforcement, is that when the acreage would count or come into any sort of calculation, not the development modification?
That would be the case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the county has no further witnesses to present at this time.
Mr. Pleat?
No further witnesses from the appellate investigation.
Do you want to do a summation real quick?
I think I've made my points, and because of late hour, I don't think I need to reiterate them to the board. I think you listened very attentively to the arguments presented.
Mr. Shipman?
Yes, sir. And I know it's late hour, but since I didn't get to stand up here and make one, I'd like to make one. I'll make it quick. The points I wrote down, first, we talked about the acreage of the development. And what we heard is, it doesn't matter. But if it did matter, they have the burden of proof, and they haven't presented anything to show that this property isn't 1.97 acres. Second issue is how much of the, whether we comply with the Dune Lake Protection Zone. Again, they have the burden of proof. They haven't shown anything that we don't. The testimony of Mr. Carpenter is that we do. And in fact, we actually are going to be better than what the original development order provided for because we shrunk the size of the building and removing the swimming pool and replanting. And the swimming pool is roughly the same size as our building. Third is that they argue that we didn't have the parking. We're required to have seven parking spaces. We have 10 on our property. The fourth is the stormwater. Well, you can't blame us for the stormwater problem because there wasn't anything on our bill, on our property to flood their property, and they showed you pictures from a 200-year storm. This is a valid permitted, this is a valid development order. It's a platted lot. We're entitled to build on it. We're building a very low-impact building. It's got a footprint of 1,600 square feet. It's a general commercial on the first floor, and it's a singular residential on the second floor. My clients gave up commercial use of the dock, and they shrunk the building. And they agreed to get rid of the swimming pool. You should uphold the granting of this development order. Thank you.
Motion to close the public discussion.
Go move.
Second. We need a second to close the public discussion. Are y'all going to second it? We got to have a second to close it, to have a discussion, so we can get a motion.
You want to ask them anything else?
I had a question. Didn't, I, I don't know who I'm going to ask it to, but my, one of my questions was, does the lot split affect the development order?
No, we're not asking no question. We're going to close it, and we're going to vote on it. Motion to die, like to second. You have something to ask, ask the plaintiff or the plaintiff.
I, I, when, when they did the lot split, does... I, I, when, when they did the lot split, does that negate the development order? Or does that, does it continue to go?
No, sir, it does not.
Okay.
Mac, excuse me, Mr. Carpenter, while you're there, if I recall, there was several years lapsed and nothing was being done. At what point is, is it rescinded?
Never.
Never, so like you said, 50 years from now, it could still be valid.
Unless there's a law change that would change what the law is today. I mean, a subdivision is a perfect example. We had lots of subdivisions that were fully developed that not, the first house had been built in, uh, some eight, 10, 12 years. They're now getting built in now, but they didn't come back in to get a new development order because they had completed all the infrastructure for the original development order that was issued. The development order doesn't authorize building the buildings. Building permits authorize building the buildings. The development orders authorize accounting for the impacts of what is proposed to be built and what can be built with the proper building permit. Providing all the infrastructures in place.
Some of this is repetitious, and we need to move along.
Yes, sir.
I, I got a question, ma'am. When did the coastal Dune Lake protections come into effect?
I think, uh, January 1993.
Why, why, I mean, I know you, you may have suspected that, I don't know. Why does it appear that the impacts are greater? Are they greater? I mean, do we have a calculation anywhere?
We don't believe they're greater, and that calculation exists on the data table of the original approved site plan that showed all of this area that's outlined in white. When that was approved, there was a determination made that what was proposed to be built and the impervious surface and the disturbed area that was proposed to be built met the law at the time when that development order was issued, 10 years ago.
Okay.
We have to honor that. We can't go back and just say.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion to close the public discussion.
Motion to close it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We have an appeal to the planning department's, uh, decision, development order made in You may have to help us here because it has to be in an affirmative. Is that correct? So do, we, I.
Point, point of order, Mr. Tyler, the planning and development code requires a written order, a statement of criteria, statement of facts, and conclusion.
Correct. And you're going to help us?
Yes, sir.
We need a motion.
I think so, you still have to, on the ruling, the issue.
Oh, I brought on the ruling, but there will be a statement of facts. We're just trying to make sure we're clear that the decision that we have is to uphold the decision. The appeal is to deny, the appeal is to deny the, the permit.
That's correct. And in order to do that, you'll need four votes.
Right. So I need a motion.
I make a motion to uphold the permit.
I have a motion to uphold the permit.
I have a second.
Should it be to deny the app?
Yeah, you already have the permit approved.
You got to have a motion to deny.
If you're going to overturn that, that would be your motion. So it would be a motion to uphold the appeal or to deny the appeal?
I don't know if they say it in the affirmative.
It's got to be to deny the appeal that's to uphold the appeal.
Well.
Or uphold the planning department's decision.
It depends on what the motion is, but you still got to have four votes.
So you want to uphold the planning department's decision?
I make a motion to uphold the planning department's decision.
Then you have to have a motion to deny the appeal.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's correct, except that the motion, if it is to deny the appeal, uh, that would be a four-vote majority. If it's to affirm, that would be four votes as well, so let's, let's word it however we want to.
We have a.
The motion should be if, the appeal is in place. You're, you're looking, the motion, if it is such as to overturn, and that would take four votes. Otherwise, the appeal stands. There is no overturning of it. You don't have to make a vote to support.
What he, what my understanding is, he wants to uphold the decision of the planning department to do that, then he has to deny the appeal of the appellant. So the motion would be to deny the appeal.
It could be either one, to uphold or to deny.
If you uphold the appeal, then you're upholding the appeal for the, for the.
If you're upholding the decision of the staff and the county, not uphold the appeal.
But.
I make a.
His motion could be to deny.
I make a motion to deny the appeal.
We have a motion to deny the appeal.
Okay.
We have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Scott, let's start with you. Hope Tony's going to be long.
Well, David's put on, he's got a good point with everything he's put out there. Then again, staff has got a good point also. The, uh, it's, it's hard for me now, without really looking back in, it's hard for me to understand how you can have one parcel number with a development order on it that's existing, and then even, even whether the infrastructure's in or not, and then we have this other parcel created by lot split going to another, another party. It just, it's, something just doesn't seem right to me. That's why, that's where I'm going to leave it.
Would it not, would it not be clear that in the original development order, there was two buildings to be built?
Oh, I, I understand.
And then you could take and have a lot split to build that structure that was not built at the time, but the infrastructure was in for it?
They already have, they already have.
No, they're not.
But Scott, every.
They had a 6,000, and they had a 2,000. They built the 6,000, they didn't build the 2,000. And when they didn't build the 2,000, it was already falls under this development order. You could split that out on the lot split.
Every.
I understand.
Every house gets its own parcel number, but it's part of a larger development. Every common area gets its own parcel number, even though it's part of a larger development. It's no different if the Home Depot develops a large parcel, Walmart develops a large parcel, and they sell an out parcel within it.
That's right.
It's got its own number.
That's right.
It's just a, it's an ownership, not a, not a planning and development.
If they built both buildings originally, they could do lots but after the fact, and there would be, sell the building in the building.
My concern would have come in if they were trying to use that to game the system in terms of reducing their, their area to offset the impact or to move the impact around.
And that's not the case.
But that doesn't appear to be the case because they're working on.
The case is they reduced it.
Correct.
Yes.
Wasn't nobody concerned about the percentage you can build on going from the water to their property line? Because it's definitely less than 300 feet, so that, doesn't that dramatically reduce the buildable area?
And that's the, the one place to look at. However, unfortunately, the appellant has not provided documentation on the final proposal. They only gave us a proposal on, or a, a study on existing impacts which are being removed. We don't know the impact of the final proposal.
I thought this testimony from Mr. Carpenter that because it's been 10, 12 years ago, that the original's been, been approved, that it is not an issue.
The original was approved based on the entire.
But the structure was already in, and he said that if you had, if, if this was a, just a vacant piece of property, then he would take that into consideration, but since it's already been approved and it, the development order was built up, it was built, it's ready, it's done. And he said you cannot look at that because it was approved back in 2010, and they put it in within the two years.
And I agree.
It's not the same apple. I mean, it's not, it's not the same.
Yeah. However, if it was egregious and documented, I would open that can of worms, but we can't even make a decision. There's no information provided on the final proposal.
I agree with it, with maybe something a little more consideration, but I don't think that it would take precedent the fact that it was approved in 10, 12 years ago, and it's, all of it's in.
It's all in, but we can't even have.
The development order is completed.
Yeah, but we can't.
And, and the planning department has worked evidently diligently to take what was given to them and reduce it to protect what they can.
I agree, and I commend that, um, it's not easy to convince people to do those.
And I, and, and I think that, you know, knowing our planning department, if they could restrict it, they would have restricted more, so, and I'm glad to see that they're working within a vis, that was, you know, happened 10, 12 years ago.
Um, I, I think it was, uh. I think they've significantly reduced the, what could have been built and what could have been done. I think it, I think they've got the, I think the county did, worked in good faith to, to get the best job they could get out of this. I think they did it, worked with the property owner to get it done, um, and they approved the permit. I can't see where they did anything wrong. Um, I don't, I don't think we've had any actual proof that the, uh, 25% has actually been messed up or not messed up, even, even with that, we've got some aerials that say, you know, kind of a little bit here and there, and you can take it and put it in a third, and if you take out the pool, shrink down the building. Uh, I'm not convinced that there's any, any mistakes that have been made that I can see. I'm kind of good with it.
We're closing the public discussion, and we're not going to open it back up. We have a motion to deny. Anyone, any other comment? Any other discussion? Motion, close discussion?
Motion to close.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We have a motion to deny the appeal. Scott, how do you vote?
Nay.
Charlie?
I vote to deny that appeal.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill?
Nay.
Aye.
Mr. Pleat?
Yes, sir.
Your appeal has been upheld, is that correct? Because we had to have four.
It's to be four.
We'll have to make a formation.
Yeah.
No.
The, the.
We, we have to.
The affirmative would have to be the four.
To affirm the appeal, you'd have to have four. To deny, it is needed majority.
Majority.
To deny the appeal, no, you have to have four either way. This board operates on four.
You have to, under the code, in order to, for you to find against the planning department, you have to have an affirmative vote of four.
The motion was to deny the appeal.
Right. So that only takes a majority. In order to overturn the planning department, you have to have four votes.
And denying the appeal is, is upholding the planning department.
But you only need a majority to uphold. You need four to overturn.
Now, Alan Raymond would ask us to read, read.
If I could, Mr. Tyler, I'll read the exact language. Would you leave it up to counsel for the board to make the determination? Um, it's under the LDC on the, uh, section 10. A concurring vote of at least four members of the board shall be necessary to reverse any order, requirement, decision, or determination made by an administrative official in the enforcement of this code, or to decide in favor of the applicant on any matter upon which is required to pass under this section, or to affect any variance in the application of the section.
I think under the arguments, though, that you presented earlier, the applicant is the appellant.
That would make no sense.
Yeah, so.
Because eventually, what you're saying is.
What's the section number?
If you don't get four votes.
10.02.
It would die.
1.03, I apologize.
If you don't get four, it would die.
It would die.
If you don't get four votes on anything, it would die, which means that it's upheld.
That's right.
That's right.
That's correct.
But we still have to vote on the other.
Right.
So that it would then officially die.
If you only have five members and three voters to deny the appeal, you only got two to uphold it.
It'll only take three votes if you remake the motion.
It doesn't take three. This board operates on four votes.
I mean, what was your vote?
You have to have four votes.
Aye.
He was aye.
To overturn what the, to uphold the appeal.
You have to have four votes to uphold the appeal, you have to have four votes to deny the appeal. We had the vote to deny the appeal, and it was three to two. Now we have a vote to approve the appeal, and it dies three to two.
Correct.
And then it would.
So the appeal would be upheld.
Up, the appeal would not be upheld.
I mean.
It would die.
The decision of.
The decision would.
Staff would be upheld.
Right.
Correct.
But we need another motion to make sure that's clean.
Correct. You need the motion to vote.
We need a motion to approve the appeal.
But that, but that's not necessary. There's not a four-vote majority, and that's, so you're not going to get four votes.
You don't think we need to do it just?
So there'd be no action.
If we had a full board, and yes, we would, where we would have the opportunity to have, but we're missing two, as it, as it is.
Well, so.
It's just been in the past, Alan always made sure that we just clean it up by having the, we did.
Second motion?
Yes. But you're our legal counsel. What do you want us to do?
Why don't you make the motion to uphold the staff or to deny the appeal? Let's see what the vote is.
We just had the motion to deny the appeal.
To deny, so.
And it was three to two.
So we need a motion to uphold the appeal.
It's a, it's upheld, it's because the appeal's been denied.
Correct.
So, we're done.
But it doesn't leave you with an overturn of the staff's decision.
Right. See, that's a legal issue, huh?
Staff's decision's been upheld.
Correct.
Right.
You're the one going to fight this in the appellate court.
I understand.
Now, is this gonna, is, is the judge going to make a comeback to us to clean this up? Because that was a concern.
No, I think the judge is going to decide this one.
Yeah, I think too.
You don't think he's going to turn it back, that we did not, are we supposed to have four?
Mr. Pleat has to have a final decision from this board in order to proceed.
Right.
And that's, that's what we're giving them.
The motion was to deny the appeal. We have three denying it, and two, two upholding, denying, three voting that.
Correct.
Right? Care, is that correct?
Three, two.
Yes, I have Scott Rosenhorn, nay. Charles McKinley, aye. Joe Johnson, aye. Will Fletcher, nay. Tony Velli, aye.
So you're telling this board that because it's a three-to-two decision, that the, the planning department decision has been upheld?
The motion, I would suggest that you make a motion that the planning department be upheld.
I agree.
And if it fails, it's, there's still not going to be a change.
Right. That's right. But it'd clean it up.
That's.
Couldn't hurt owners.
They give you better, they give you better chance. Motion to approve, to uphold the decision on the planning department.
I make a motion to uphold the planning department's decision.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. We'll start this time. Tony, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bill?
Nay.
Aye?
Aye.
Nay.
And so I, I think you're still in the back of the same position you were in.
Exactly.
So his appeal was.
No action.
Right. So his appeal is denied.
That's correct.
Mr. Pleat, your appeal is denied. You have thirty days from the time I get the order signed to file the appeal in search court.
I understand, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have a request, request number five to continue.
Wonder why?
Number five, the last item on our agenda is the Geiger Residence variance. We got a correspondence from the applicant asking this be continued until the August twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen date.
Motion to continue.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve. Pardon me?
I didn't think there was a member.
That's what I was trying to do. You ready, Carrie?
Ready.
Motion to approve the minutes from the.
Where are the minutes?
Right before one, number one.
That's the blue.
I wasn't here for that. There's voices.
You can still call.
Oh, I can?
Yeah. Motion to approve.
So move, well, I can't.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Tony?
Second.
It's freezing here. Tony, what do you think?
Interesting. We do so many of these, but to step into this from cold was, was interesting.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
You should be up, Judge.
He is. Does anybody want to go?
Just today.
Judge, for this, you go?
No, thank you.
Have some.
Man, take half of us, all right? How about leave me two?
You want some of this, sir?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else want some?
No, thanks.